Let's turn to the project agenda. At federal agency of the flag of United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight and let's start with the approval of the agenda tonight. We have a couple of changes on the agenda. I'm just gonna go through them. First, we have under action items, we need to move item number C, the social media night needs to be moved to a discussion item. And excuse me, under E, migrant professional development, that needs to be pulled from part of the agenda. We need to add under the COVID nineteen resolution, that is needs to become resolution number zero two twenty-two, and we are going to ask that that be approved to bypass first reading and move out to approval for a second reading of the resolution number zero two twenty-two. And then I want to add a final item under action, which is the Appointment Committee for Local Voters Panel, and that would be Dr. Tim Strub. And so those are the additional items that would need to be under action items, and then since we're moving the social media night, then action items that would be moved down under discussion items, so that would become due under discussion items. Are there any other changes to the agenda by other board members? Okay, so then I would indicate a motion to approve the revised agenda.
Motion to approve the revised agenda.
Motion by junior seconded by Andy. Is there any further discussion? And then I think we'll proceed with the third by saying no. Uh, yes, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda tonight is student reports. So avid senior presentations.
Okay, good. Excellent. Thank you, school board, for allowing us to come. This is our third and final evening to showcase some of our avid seniors. So I'm gonna go ahead and just turn it over to them. We have a large crew tonight, and then we'll kind of close in. We just wanna let you know that we appreciate your time and gonna go ahead and let them get started.
Hi, my name is Alexa Langwell, and I've been in the avid program for seven years. Avid has helped me be more social around others, and the career that I wanna pursue is business management or marketing. I'm still undecided whether I want to attend CBC or Eastern, but I know I'll thrive in whichever one I choose. I am grateful for the avid program because it has helped me have time management skills and note-taking skills for my college classes.
Hello, my name. Hello, my name is Fermin Garreta, and I have been an avid student for seven years. Avid has helped me in many different ways. Avid has taught me how to stay organized and how much it can help me by boosting my productivity and making it easier to complete assignments. Avid has always helped me be on top of my grades, and without it, I definitely would have struggled way more. Without Avid, I would not have been able to know what steps I have to take in order to get into a four-year college. It helped me get into Eastern Washington University and Cal State LA. Avid helped me realize how important it is to take notes and how to form good habits when it comes to my education. It also helped me stay on top of everything I need and not procrastinate, and how important it is communication is between my teachers and my peers.
That is a very cool sweater.
My name is Brianna Babo, and I've been in Avid for six years. My future plans are to go to CBC for my first two years, then to transfer to Eastern Washington to finish my degree in business marketing. Avid has made me want a future for myself and to get an education after high school. Through Avid, I've learned to communicate and work in a group.
My name is Liliana Alvaros, and I've been in the avid program for seven years now. I'm undecided on whether or not I'll be attending Eastern or CBC, but I plan on majoring in psychology. And being able to have firsthand convos with guest speakers gave me input on college I would have never gotten with our Avid, and I'm grateful for the extra support system Avid provided me when I needed it most.
Hi, my name is Lisbeth Manam, and I have been in Avid for seven years. I'm grateful for the Avid program because it has taught me to be organized and has given me the skills I need to develop to be successful in college. I plan to attend other UTR cities in order to pursue a career as a healthcare administrator.
Hi, my name is Josie Martinez. I have been in Avid for seven years. In the fall, I will be attending CBC in order to receive my A, then transfer to Eastern Washington and finish up there. Being in Avid has taught me many things, and if it has taught me anything is I wanna go to college and thrive in whatever college I choose. I would have opened my perspective of going to college and building my education. I would love to see the program continue.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Musillo, and I have been in Avid for seven years. Through Avid, I learned to be organized and work as a team. I am grateful for Avid because it has helped me gain confidence. I am undecided of my career choices, but I am interested in the medical field. Next year, I plan to go to CBC.
My paper out there. I'm gonna stick to the script tonight, folks. So, in summary, just wanted to thank the board for their support of our avid program and express my gratitude to be able to work with such a fine group of young adults. I've seen growth, personal and academic. Avid's role varies for each student. Some students, it's college readiness skills like note-taking, organization, and time management. For others, it's accountability and guidance on how to navigate the college admissions process. And for others, it's the safety and family culture created through the avid elective class. I'm so excited to see where this fine group of young individuals lands and the mark they'll make on our society. So, thank you. I'm sure they'd love to entertain any questions you might have before they run out of here.
Casey, I had a quick question for you. I don't, I'm sure they didn't have this program when my kids were in school, but are they recruited? Are there a group of teachers that tell them what it is, or is there a big assembly, or how does this happen?
That is actually a really good question, and every student has the opportunity to apply to be in the avid program, but there are, is certain criteria that we look for to make sure that we have the right fit and the right student for the program. Avid isn't a program for everybody, but it is a program for some. So, the way that they find out about it is, it starts actually in middle school, and I believe, I'm not positive, but I think they even start going down into the fifth grade. The avid elective class, which is what they're part of, it actually starts in sixth grade, and these kids just loop every single year, and some come in and, and some leave, but for the most part, they start it in middle school and then just continue on through high school. So, they find out about it basically through middle school. There is a number of things they have to fill out in application. We look at grades, GPA, we look sometimes first generation. A lot of the students are the first to go to, to college, and a few other things, but those are the biggies. Good question.
It just sounds like a great program, and thank you, and thanks to students who have came and talked.
They're the ones who've done all the work. They, they, a couple of them said avid made me, but avid didn't make them. Avid gave them the skills and the opportunity, and they took it and ran with it. They've made that choice, so. The question was, is the grade point average the lower or the higher? And to be honest, it's right in the middle. The, the general GPA for our avid students, at least starting out, is usually about a two-point-oh to about a three-point-oh, with the hope that the support that avid provides, that they are able to, many of our students, almost all of them end up taking a college in the high school or advanced placement class. So, with those supports, we hope that they will push, push themselves academically and gain the skills so they can be successful. So, if, there's really not, our GPA ranges from, I think, maybe about a two-point-oh, and then I think we have some that are three-six, three-seven. So, we're all across the board. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I told them they could leave right when they were done. So, again, we thank you and appreciate your service, and have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, the student representative reports. I can't see who we have down there. Oh, hey, how are you? You're it. You have a report tonight?
Hello? Oh, okay. Um, so I just, well, I guess they've left already, but I wanted to say that I thought the avid program just seemed really great, and I just really appreciate all the work that Ms. Blair put into them. And then, also, I don't think I have anything in particular to report today, but I do want to note that the rest of the student representatives wanted me to let you know that they won't, unfortunately, won't be here today, but yeah, that's basically what they asked me. And, yeah, I don't think I have anything to report as of right now, at least.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, we are at the point of the meeting where we are ready to do the hearing of visitors and the protocol for addressing the board. We do need the, the list. I wanna thank everybody that has come, both in the audience tonight, how are you tonight, Sarah, and also via Zoom. This is the, the portion of the meeting where we do like to open it up. We are interested in hearing your, thank you, we are interested in, in hearing from our community members. We know that there's always a lot on, on our community's mind, and where we'd like to hear what you'd like to say. And so, in our audience tonight, we have Sarah, and I know that she has a friend with her. I didn't see your name on the list. Are you wanting to also speak? Okay, you can, if you decide you want to, you can. Yeah, you have, and then we also have people in our Zoom audience, so I'm gonna ask the gals in the, the control room up there to help me identify those that would like to speak from the, from the Zoom audience so that we get a hold, we get everybody an equal chance to speak. Sarah, I'm gonna go ahead and let you start tonight, and then the Zoom with, if Sean, I think Sean's up there, if you'll help identify those in the Zoom audience, we'll make sure we get everyone. Thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Am I on a timer? Is the mic on?
If you have to say your first, say your name, spell it, and then go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah Miller.
Hi, Sarah.
And am I on a timer tonight? No? Okay, all right. I have several questions I would like to ask the board, and I would actually also like to just say, I would love to have a comment back to what I have to say or an answer to my question. So, if anytime you wanna respond, just let me know, and I'll stop, because that's what I'm here for.
Okay, this part of the board meeting, bring the comments section, we really are just listening.
Okay, but there's a problem with that, though, because it's just, it's a lack of communication. We never get our, our questions answered, so that's why I said that. But okay, if you're allowed to, that's fine.
Sean, can you turn up the volume on that mic, please? Thank you.
Okay, so if there is one thing that I constantly hear from parents of PSD that is their biggest concern about this district, it's bullying. Unfortunately, I can relate to that. I will say that it's better now that my kids aren't in middle school anymore, but it's still happening, and it happens in all the schools, and it's very unfortunate. My senior, who some of you know, should not be dreading to go to school every day and instead of enjoying her senior year, and unfortunately, she is. She just can't wait to get through, and it's because of bullying. Something, as a parent, I've almost just kinda given up on as far as talking to the principals about it, because honestly, it just makes it worse. And I, like I said, I've heard this from so many parents, students and staff. It is a systemic problem at PSD, and it has been for many years, according to what I've heard from other people. I feel like it really needs to be addressed. It's not just a problem with students. My opinion, this is my opinion, but I witnessed bullying with the board members at last week's board meeting, and it really did bother me. Director Riley and Rayner, I want to say thank you for asking questions. I wanna thank you for actively involving parents and their concerns. Thank you for being a voice until now. I honestly felt like we didn't have one, so I really do appreciate that. Thank you for advocating for us, and there's other parents that notice it as well. So, the question is, what are we gonna do to fix the bullying problem? I say "we" because, first of all, the board needs to keep in mind that you do work for the parents and students and staff of this district. Sometimes I feel like that's been forgotten, but it does take parent involvement to make these changes happen, which is why... Sorry. So, this has been happening from, for some time now. I've been told by many staff, students and parents that they choose to not speak because of how they've been treated at the board meetings by other, by the board members. I witnessed that as well. I feel like that needs to stop. I feel like everyone should feel comfortable to come before the board and voice their concerns, and it's unfortunate that people feel that way, especially when staff and teachers don't come to, to say their concerns because they're fear, they fear retaliation, which is not okay. Another problem I'd like to discuss, this is also another thing that I've heard from other parents and I have experienced myself, is how the superintendent Matt refuses to communicate with parents about our concerns. He will not return calls, and he does not return emails, even when it's something very important, like your kid being assaulted at school, and that's not okay. I think that's something that the board needs to address. As a parent, being blatantly ignored by the superintendent makes it incredibly hard to have any faith in, in the district and feel that my kids are gonna be safe at school. So, the next thing I wanna talk about, my favorite subject is the mask mandate. Now that we have a magical day, March 21st, I'm not sure why we have to wait until then, but we do. I do have a question, because I did read the announcement on the, the website. It states that the kids are still going to have to wear masks on the buses because of the rule where it states that it's public transportation. I'd like to know how that, how our, I know it's public schools, but the, our buses are not pop, public transportation. Those kids are gonna ride home from school with the same kids that they were at school with all day long, they didn't have masks on, and I find it absolutely ridiculous. So, I just feel like those are questions that the school board and everyone really should be asking Inslee and his office, why? It makes absolutely no sense. And if we're not gonna do that and stand up for our kids, like we haven't for the last two years, which I won't be surprised, then I feel like the board needs to start discussing now the safety of that, because it gets hot here in the summertime. And like I told you last week, my, my little girl, my eight-year-old, got off that bus with heat stroke and passed out and threw up, and we had to go to the hospital, and it's not safe. Those buses don't have air conditioning. They keep the windows up, and those kids have their faces covered. My, I don't think my daughter has too long of a drive home, but some kids have quite a, quite a long drive. So, that's something that the board needs to think about. It is a safety issue. Um, the next thing I wanna talk about is, several months ago, I addressed the board with my concern of a possible COVID vaccine mandate that's going to be implemented in schools. I say "going to" because we all know it most likely will be. I was told by Matt that this subject would be put on an upcoming agenda to be discussed, but I have not seen that so far. As I said before, this will be the deciding factor for me. If it is implemented, my kids will be withdrawn from the district. From what I've heard, my children will not be the only ones, and many parents feel the same. I did email Matt suggesting a parent survey be done by the district about the vaccine to get parents' input on how they feel, and, I mean, if, if they, if it's a deciding factor for them as well, I think it's important for the district to know that they're going to have a mass exodus of, of kids because of this vaccine mandate. So, that was a suggestion, but again, I didn't get a response. I think that's something that needs to be discussed now before it happens. Since COVID started, I feel like we've all, we've been three steps behind with everything, and this is important. I feel like we shouldn't be. I feel like it needs to be discussed. It's coming. I believe their next meeting is, the Board of Health, which I attend those meetings as well, is March 4th, and I see it coming soon. So, I think, I think that's all I have. All right, thank you.
We can talk about a couple of those things. I guess, I feel like we can talk about a couple of those things, Sarah. The board did take a, a... We did take, I don't know, the stand on the vaccine issues several months ago, and I don't know how much weight it has in the overall scheme of things, but our, our stance was that we supported that it was a, that those decisions were more of parent choice. And that was, that was the, the board, the board's agreement on that, was that unless that became a mandate or a law, that we supported that those types of decisions needed to be at the parent level, not at the school level. So, that we did do that. As far as the busing, that school buses are controlled at the federal level is why they're, they're still mandated to have masks, and so that's why that separated out. And that, that's why kids after March 21st are still in masks on school buses. And I, I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's, I mean, we have, we have to follow the laws that are put in place in front of us. So, I'm glad that the 21st, we can have kids in the classrooms again without masks on. I'm grateful for that, but we're still gonna be fighting that school bus issue at this point anyway. I'm sorry, I can't hear you. At, at this point, they, I don't think we can put them on the bus. I, I don't know. We'd have all that to work through, but, yeah. And then, oh. So, go ahead, Alyssa, you have something you want to add?
Do we, do we have a program in the districts to address bullying? Because it, it is a concern I hear all the time throughout all the grades, and I can see, you know, what other districts are doing as far as bringing in people in assemblies at the high school level, and then at the elementary level, different, you know, age-appropriate curriculum regarding bullying, regarding suicide awareness and prevention, what to look for, you know, mental health awareness. And do we have programs like that in place? I think it's, I agree with the adjectives Sarah used. It's endemic in our system.
Do you need something? Well, I have two comments. When our, I'm speaking up because everybody tells me I have a soft voice. Okay, our youngest grandson did it in school here in Prosser, and in the lower grades, they had, every Friday, the school psychologist slash counselor came in and they talked about these kind of things. Bullying, if you felt bad about something, do you have someone that you trust to talk to? So, I know some of that's being addressed. I don't know to what level. And then my comment on the vaccine mandate, I've read some articles. At one time, there was some schools throwing around, well, we get tired of having so many students out with flu, and they said, that will never happen, and I think this will be looked at as a flu once it dies down. Some people get their children vaccinated for flu, some people don't, and that's a personal choice, and I think that's how it will be. That's my opinion.
Right? I don't think they'll ever get that.
Oh, you can't hear. Okay, all right. So, it, all right.
You, I can respond about curriculum. So, each of the buildings, every building has curriculum, and that they do with students in the elementary. That's primarily taught through lessons with counselors and at the secondary through their, their advisory program. And then counselors also have, like, individual resources to work with, like, people, individual students or groups of students that, that are research-based programs to do, where they would spend maybe over a series of, of days with a student for a period of time, working with them through role-playing, they do role-playing in classrooms, those kinds of things, but we all know that it, it is not answering all of the problems. And it is more of a, a overall general instruction, unless a student has an issue and they end up working with a counselor individually or with, you know, maybe more than one student, depending on the situation. So, it is something we, you know, we continue to hear, so there, there needs to be something different to address it.
So, I would also say, in addition to that, there are transitional programs that we've used that have shown to reduce bullying. Web Crew and Link Crew at the middle school and high school have been showed to reduce that. The middle school has a program called Character Strong that they also use, and the high school is implementing that as well. In addition to that, and this is just over the past, past week or so, we've started to implement basically no contact orders in addition to walking paths and things like that to separate students who have bullying issues. I've heard the same things, that it's pervasive within the district. So, you know, the, I think that we have to be more aggressive in our tactics perhaps, and then we have to look at programmatic changes that can change things systemically.
I, I could also say, so, one of the, especially at the secondary, one of the places that they, they get lots of reports or issues is around cell phones, social media, texting, those kinds of things. So, Sean. So, um, Sean Schultz, our district technology director, um, we're bringing committee together. She, uh, this is something we just had the discussion of because there's several schools that have banned kids having phones at school. And that actually has brought down bullying issues considerably in their districts as well as distractions in classrooms when they should be focusing on work and might be paying attention to their phones. So those issues keep being, uh, arising, like, can we not have phones? If we have neighbors down the road in Grandview that don't allow cell phones with, with their students. And it's been successful. It's a transition, and sometimes it's hard for people to handle. But honestly, we have hundreds of phones in our schools if somebody needs to make a phone call. So that is something that we are, um, going to be exploring here too and looking at what our policies are related to, to having cell phones. Because it is, that's where a lot of issues that come to our administrators come out of cell phones. And we have kids with cell phones in primary school, for goodness sake. Like, kids have cell phones very young now. And they aren't always very, know really how to use them without getting themselves into some issues.
All right.
You know what? I've always tried to sit here and prove that the old saying, you open your mouth and remove all doubt, applies to me, that I'm gonna prove I'm not as sharp as I think I am for a second to speak up. I was disappointed when you said something about the board being bullied. I have never spoken to anybody across that's come to speak to us. I've met with people on ditch banks. I get texts. In fact, if you don't have my number, you're probably one of like a half a dozen in the entire town. And I'll be happy to give it to you. We used to meet at Becky's once a month, just to, and we, we'd advertise it. This is like three years ago. Obviously, Coach slowed it down. But it disappoints me to hear that. And I, I understand some people may have that opinion, and it's usually the ones that don't agree with us. Well, anyway, what I have told everybody that's ever contacted me about any bullying is you go to your building, supervisor, principal, vice principal. If you don't get the answer that you think you should have, you go up the ladder. At some point, you end up here. And, and that's what you're doing. That's great. You followed the chain. What we're gonna do about buses is unfortunately whatever we're told to do about buses. And that's what it boils down to. And, and as for the bullying, I'm, I'm, my wife works in Grand School Nurse. And I can assure you that the drama, the bullying that happens here, and yes, we do hear, hear about some of it. It's not just here.
Yeah.
Kids are mean.
They are.
I mean, that's what it boils down to. Facebook is the devil. Yeah, I, I'll stop now before I. Oh, and, and just so you know about the vaccine, I've been on record, and I know at least a couple of us have, I will never vote for anything that, that refers to a vaccine mandate. Masks, I'm still on the fence. But I'm on record, I, I will not do it. Period.
That's encouraging. And, and I didn't mean anything towards you specifically. But I, I will say that a teacher, I'm not gonna name names, but a teacher that everyone loves is actually the one that told me that. And that was disheartening to hear that.
Okay.
You know, I, I have one more quick comment.
Okay, then we probably need to go on. All right. Thank you.
I've got two grown children, two grown grandchildren, and then a younger grandson. Bullying is not a new thing. It's always gone on. I think it's gotten worse because of social media, because people can say whatever they want without censor. Um, I think kids used to be better about sticking up for each other, saying, hey, don't treat her that way or whatever. Um, and, and I think some of that comes from parenting. It's not a good situation, but I think everybody is trying to work at it. We talk to our kids about bullying. You know, maybe people don't do that anymore. That would help some, you know? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Sean, do we have anybody in our Zoom audience that would like to address the board? Okay. We have one other person in the audience that wasn't sure if she was gonna address the board. Nope. Okay. All right. We're gonna move on then. Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is consent items. I entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented. Okay, so I don't see them. Move them to discussion or?
Yes, please. Move C and D to discussion.
All right.
That is a great point. The minutes need to be moved to action.
Move to action.
And same with the coaches.
That's fine. I'll move them down into action. All right. Thank you. Okay, so, um, I entertain a motion to approve con- consent items A and B.
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A and B.
All right. Motion by Jeanie.
I will second it.
Seconded by Andy. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I do have some comments, please, before we.
Oh, oh, on A and B. All right. Go ahead.
Um, so this is the second meeting that we've seen a number of people resign. And I think at the last board meeting, I asked, you know, that we perform exit interviews for whatever reason.
An exit interview?
You know, I, I don't, being new to the board, I, I, I haven't seen a number of these, but we have had two consecutive meetings where people have resigned. And it would be, I think it's prudent for us to know some of those reasons. So whether, I don't think we have a formal policy or procedure that does that, but that's something that we need to enact now, I mean, soon. Because if we continue to have people leave, we need to figure out why. I mean, we can all assume, but we need to hear it from them. And it's a powerful tool on things that what we're doing right and what we're doing wrong. And I just think it's, it should be a, a policy from this board to do those type of things.
We took action the meeting, the day after we had that meeting. Um, I met with Kim Bolt, and she put together kind of a Survey Monkey as well as, um, and she was working with Sean Schultz on the Survey Monkey about something to send to employees. And then, um, was going to follow up with a phone call type of interview. Um, so, yeah, we did, we did take action on that. It is, we are working on it through technology and through our department.
Okay, so.
Thank you. What, just a quick comment. Is that gonna be something that the board will be able to review and, uh, look at?
Yeah, so with any, with any data that we collect, the board has open access to that. And so is I, one of, one of the last proposals was, um, like a, a board calendar, right? And so I sent two samples. One was from Eastmont. I think the other one was from Squim. Uh, they were, they were laid out in different ways. But deciding on like a date, um, which would probably be this time of year, springtime going into summer to say, all right, we have X number of employees leaving the organization. Uh, were they ready to retire? Were they chasing a higher wage? Was there a district they considered better? Um, was it support and treatment? What was it, you know, what was the reason they left? And I, I think it's important to distinguish not just, not just instructional staff or teachers per se. Um, we want to develop a culture where everybody wants to be here. Everybody wants to give their best. Um, from the, you know, shortest, the, um, you know, part-time worker to the full-time, to, I guess, to the superintendent level. And so fostering a culture that we're, we're here for Prosser. We're here for our kids. We want to be the best.
So that can come after, we can accept the resignation, but we need that documentation for after the fact?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Right. Right. So it's in the works.
It is. So I'll loop back around tomorrow.
And I know that in-
Include that as part of my weekly update to the board, where we're at, if those have been sent out or, or we're out on it.
And I know that in February and March, we have a incentive stipend for those people that are retiring early that, uh, that if they notify us early, then we, we give them a stipend for?
Yeah, there's a couple of job fairs in the state, um, particularly for teachers.
Okay.
Uh, one's in Spokane, one's in the Seattle-Tacoma area. And so the, the stipend there is, um, intended to allow us to go into those job fairs or develop recruitment measures. So when we have a list of people who have resigned, um, that we can go out and, um, recruit.
Is that just for retirees or is that for anybody that's?
It's, I believe it's an early notification statement.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So we have a motion on the table by Jeanie, seconded by Andy. All in favor of, uh, approving the consent items A and B, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, oh, yes. Thank you. Moving on to action items. First action item is the approval of the vouchers. Well, let's just get right to it and do the questions on the vouchers. That's okay.
I do, I can start.
Okay.
Questions, and it, towards the back of the vouchers. I think we had, I think that was the reason we had two different revised agendas yesterday, was the additional vouchers. Is that? Okay, just one. Oh, yeah, I saw, I saw that one for the million dollars. Uh, my question was regarding the change orders at the different elementary schools in Witstran.
Which is it? Which number is it that we can follow along?
I've got it circled. There was just a lot of vouchers. No, it wasn't. There was one for Witstran. There was one for KRB. There was one for Heights. Unless I'm thinking something else.
Alicia, or Lisa, it was all Fowler though?
No.
Okay.
But I can go to a different question. We have, we pay storage, Riverside Storage and Prosser Mini Storage. Is there a plan to end that when we have the construction all done and not have that payment, the two, the different storage units? That's almost a thousand dollars.
Yeah, the other thing that we, to be honest, have not been real good at is destroying records that we really don't need to keep.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's another project in and of itself that we have a lot of different things from the move and that that are, that are in storage now that, once we're back up and running, then some of those would go away.
I gotta find my.
It's an overall comment. You know, looking at these vouchers twice a month, you know, I see a number of things that, that kind of raise an eyebrow and, and specifically, uh, and I'm just gonna, these are just a couple of examples. And, um, for instance, Apollo, we have a name, uh, whatever, a check for Apollo. And, um, I know it's for HVAC maintenance or repair items, and, and we've got a lot of expensive equipment. The problem I'm, I, I see, and I've, I've asked the question, unfortunately, I asked it, uh, late tonight, but so I'll get clarity later, is we had another, um, service contract approved in last month or last, our last business meeting, uh, for a maintenance contract for HVAC, and it was coded to the maintenance department. So I think as we, as I look through these and as, as we kind of look through a lot of this, um, you know, I'm not sure how to approach this, but you, I think there's times that we need to justify an expense versus just have an expense. And I think that's prudent for this district because, and, and I think it's difficult. If we were in the real, you know, in the private sector, every expense is justified. I don't know, and I'm hoping it's the same for us as a district. But we also have a revolving income that comes in every year, potentially, right? Uh, from the state. So I'm hoping that as we go through budget discussions for this, you know, this future year, that as the department heads bring forward their budget or the schools, however we do that, um, you know, that we are actually looking at all of our expenses and justifying every expense that, that comes out of the district. And, so, um, so that's my general comment, uh, for that. And I do have some specific com- or questions. Oh, here's another one. Um, so we have Apollo, and we have JR's Heating and Air Service. So we've had three different people working on it, on HVAC over the last twenty-eight day, or twenty-three days. So that's kind of another question. Let's see. And I believe it's, the check is actually a, a maintenance contract, if I'm not mistaken. It's a check number seven sixty?
While he's looking for that, Brian Aberg, our new maintenance director, is looking into, he, he's heard, he's listened to board meetings and he's heard what you said. So he's, he's checking with Home Depot to see if we can do either larger bids. He's also working on the requisition of chemicals. And so we don't have to buy, we're not buying so much in bulk, and then it's not being outdated because it's not being used. And so he has a lot of, he, he's a great process thinker. Um, and so he's, he's looking at processes and ways that efficiencies can be developed, um, within it. And so, um, yeah, I, I believe it was last week I met with him. Um, and kind of talked through some of those things. And so he said, I, I'm working on that. All that stuff is valid, so. So just know that that's, that's happening as well.
Thank you.
Two invoices, excuse me, for JR. Um, they're both for portables. I'm not sure what, where these portables are. It's portable twenty and portable twelve. Again, it's, it's coded to, um, the one for three hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty-one cents is Witstran. That's the eleven hundred. This other one is, was not specifically coded to a building. But if there's labor, there's, um, I'm not sure what these RMO nine-nine. I'm not sure what that means. But so you'll know, I mean, Brian Aberg reviews these and signs off on these, but, I guess maybe your question is, why is JR doing that as opposed to Apollo?
Well, yeah, if we're having a maintenance contract with Apollo, now we're calling in somebody else.
I, I can ask that question. It's a good question. Okay.
Thank you. My last question is Lionel Ns, PhD, DCBA-d, it's seven sixty-six.
I can speak to that. So Lionel Ns, or Dr. Ns, is, comes out, he does some basically diagnoses and behavioral, um, things with our special ed department. So we've used them in the past. And so, um, the burden is on the district to provide some of those services. So we've used him in the past to come in and evaluate students and work with our special ed department to make sure that we're offering proper services to students.
Is he local?
Seattle. Um, so he drives over from Seattle. He does work with a lot of districts throughout the state. So there's a lot of road time. I think Cindy Dean's on this as well. Cindy, you want to chime in on that? Maybe, maybe not.
Cindy, are you there?
That's what, that's what that service is for.
I'm assuming we're paying travel expenses?
Yeah, yes, it usually takes him about a day and so he'll drive over, get here at about ten. Do, do the work and then go home, write a report, send a report to us, is typically how it rolls, how it rolls out.
And he's a psychiatrist?
Yeah, he, I think, I believe he has like multiple degrees and so like Deanna said, I don't know that the Yakima Trace Cities area has somebody of his expertise. So we've used him in the past and we feel pretty comfortable with his, with his diagnoses as well as, he's pretty good at working with parents as well to, to work through issues.
Is he like over and above what a school district psychiatrist is capable of doing, like a special niche area or?
Yeah, yeah. So he's able, yeah. I don't know if I can elaborate on that.
I can't remember the exact name of his degree, but I can find it, but it's, isn't something we have locally.
Cindy, your mic is open, can you address this issue? Okay. Okay.
I, I can send the board more information about him.
All right, I appreciate that.
As well.
That's it for you, Lisa, did you have another?
I found, I found my place, so it's page forty-four of ninety-six in the packet and it is under Architects West, so we have capital project expenditures, modification addition at KRV, one at Woodstrand, one at Heights. And I guess my question is, so what, what are we, is it a modification, a change order or what, or what are they, just the work that was done?
Is that page forty-two?
So Architect West, there are architects that are.
Right.
So Woodstrand is in the development stage and so they, they bill us for that. The other two buildings are being remodeled, as you know, so they're, they're ongoing services that you're providing for architectural services.
Like ongoing changes that have to be made as they go along?
I would think that right now they would be doing a construction type review, those things, I know we have our, our consultant that's ESD. One twelve, the CSG group, that's Dax and Dan Pierfoy.
So Architects West continues to have representatives that works with us on both of our current construction projects, so our architect, that is an ongoing relationship, but but the primarily the work they're doing right now is mostly around the design of Woodstrand. And even when something is designed, like we have the packet, it's not done, so that's an ongoing process, so it's kind of like America round, you know. They're kind of, they're off the merry-go-round for the high school, but they're on for the two elementaries in process and then they're also on for Woodstrand and at some point they'll get off for the two elementaries when they're done and then Woodstrand's going, so it's an ongoing process.
Just, just to be more specific, one of the line items for the architect is construction administration, it's a three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar fee. They've earned to date sixty-seven percent of that and so this one bill is for seventy-five, seventy-five, that's that one towards the bottom. That's, that's for Heights. Then we have this, excuse me. We also have construction documents, that's with ten thousand, seven ninety-nine, that's the one for Woodstrand. And actually, there's two bills to Woodstrand, one's in October and one's more recent, so it's construction management and the design of Woodstrand.
And then the bottom of the page we have a bill that's a geo-professional innovation, what's their work that they do?
Let's say again.
It's at the same page, so it goes Architects West, Benton Arrie, ESD one twelve, and the next line item is about the geo-professional innovation. And it does say it's out of the capital projects budget, so is that like a geo-engineer?
Yeah, GPI.
In the past, it's been geotechnical surveys where they go in and do soil studies and things like that. One of the things that we ran into at KRV was the old Keen River View was actually buried. And so we, we worked through that with this, this project, and they did geotechnical surveys because how, how rocky the soil was. And so digging, digging into that, so that's what it's been in the past, but.
So this, the one bill, the invoice for six hundred and forty-two dollars, I'll just kind of give an order of the invoices here on that voucher, there's concrete work and structural steel, so that's their expertise, so there's, that's the six hundred and forty-two dollars for, that invoice was December ninth.
Well, they had a few different bills.
Yeah.
So is this just on, it's ongoing work, or do they have to do, they have to go back to the sites and do new surveys?
Yes, there's earthwork, there's.
Okay.
Steel, concrete, asphalt pavement, review, those kind of things.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, welcome.
I can tell you about Dr. Ns too, thanks to help from a friend. He's a nationally certified school psychologist and then he has a doctoral degree and he's a certified behavioral analyst. And Cindy might be able to talk now. If you want to know more, we can send you more information.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions about vouchers? All right. All right.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can, you just need to talk louder.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, thank you, Cindy.
Okay. So you have Dr. Ns's credentials that you got from Deanna. The reason we bring him in is we have some kids that are a little more complicated than what we're able to deal with or address their issues in the district that need further assessments. And because of the degrees he has, he's able to come in and do other than medical assessments, a full battery of assessments and then inform us on the best programming that we can provide the students. He's been working with the district for quite a while. To get anybody in quickly is difficult, it's usually six to a twelve-month wait. Lionel's been very good about getting to us if we have a student within a month.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the vouchers as presented tonight. Motion by Jason, is there a second? Seconded by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh yes, thank you. The next item on action items is the renewal of the Counseling Services LLC contract, we reviewed this at the last board meeting.
The roundup includes information that Benjamin Berwain requested on the ratings for Jessica's training, he had about a hundred people who submitted their evaluations for their clock hours. She was rated perfect, a perfect score by fifty-six participants and her overall rating was ninety-four, ninety-four point seven percent.
So I didn't think a motion to approve the renewal of the Counseling Services contract?
Move to approve the renewal Counseling Services LLC contract.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie, any discussion?
Yeah, I do have a question, thank you, thank you for getting some of the, you know, the data for, I guess, the rating or how well it was performed, so I appreciate that. Another part of my question, if, I know it was rated well as a good training, I guess would be the appropriate word. What are the measurables, like, like how is this training being, being used in the district and what is, you know, what is the outcome of implementing what was learned? I, I guess the measurables, how do we measure success and is it being consistently used in the district today?
So that's harder to measure. So you can see the measures at the time of the training, I included a copy of the evaluation form, it's on the back of that, that shows that, how it's evaluated during the, the training time. We are required to do an evaluation anytime we provide clock hours, this also is training that is required by the state now. So it is all about helping students who have a lot of ACEs, adverse childhood experiences. So honestly, I would be open to suggestions of how we would evaluate implementation, it's really more anecdotal through students or through adults when you're talking about how they were able to help a student or how they're able, you know, if a problem presented itself or they noticed something going on with a student and how they address that. But this particular topic would be, would be hard to capture in evaluation other than by feedback from teachers, did this help you, you know, down the road, did this help you? This is ongoing training that will be doing this type of a training on alternating years, so. You know, our peers, because they, they do a lot one-to-one with students and in small groups with students and, and because just understanding. I think one of the biggest things that people come out understanding is when students behavior, when students exhibit behaviors. Maybe they're disrespectful or maybe they don't cooperate in class or may, that it's, it's not, it's not, it's not personal, it's not about you as a teacher or me as an educator, it's about what's going on with that student and helping to recognize those things in kids so they can better understand. So how to, how to work with a student, how to address that, how they might interact with a student. But yeah, it, that would be hard to quantify, I, I, I agree, I'm, I'm not quite sure how, how we would quantify that in a, like I was a math teacher, numbers work for me, that one's a little harder. But it is something that's going to be ongoing, I mean, it's certainly something, when you, you'd see a teacher, because we had probably ninety-eight percent of our teachers attend, ask one of them. You went to that training this summer, you know, with Jessica Wallace, they might not remember her name, you know, trauma for practices, ask a teacher. And if, if they tell you, I don't know what you're talking about, I don't remember that, or, oh yeah, then, then maybe it wasn't, you know, didn't stick with them, so.
If you get a chance, Jason, I don't know that it was this specific trainer, but I sat in on one of these with my wife and it's actually very fascinating. I wouldn't recommend necessarily the odd year one, but this one you should sit on and you can find it fascinating, there's a tremendous amount of information.
It just provides a lot of insight into student behaviors, because so often, I think often adults think when a student's misbehaving, it's, again, it's not personal. It's usually about what's happening with that student and it helps teachers or adults that are working with kids look at things from a different perspective. And help them, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any questions answered, Jason? Okay, so we have a motion on the table by Andy, seconded by Jeannie to approve the renewal Counseling Services. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes, thank you. All right, we pulled the social media night and moved it to discussion. The next item on the agenda is resolution number zero-one-twenty-two, the replacement of expiring maintenance operations and educational programs levy.
To approve resolution number zero-one dash two-two, replacement of expiring maintenance operation educational programs levy. Kind of is.
I'm second. Motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie. Do we have any discussion on this item?
I have some discussion.
Okay.
I know, and maybe you can help me walk through it.
Okay.
In December, when we were talking about, you know, when we would place the levy, we voted on when it would be placed, we voted on the rate and we voted on, you know, whether we're going to do two years, three years and four years, but, so we didn't have that discussion this time and this is my concern, so let's, maybe you can walk, you know, let's walk through this. Two weeks ago, this exact same levy failed and we have approximately forty-five days until ballots are in mailboxes. So if we don't change anything, we don't change the rate, reduce it, which was a comment that a lot of people made, you know, it's a higher rate, it's not a replacement rate. If we keep it three years and not two years, what do we tell the community that we did when we listened to them or we saw that it failed to adjust for that feedback? How do we say, we're giving you the exact same thing, you just said no on, and, and say, but this time you got to pass it?
I think, I'm just going to speak for myself and then I'd like all of the board members to, to chime in on this, but I think we need to do a better job of providing information. There was a lot of misinformation floating around in the community. There were the. We didn't, I don't believe we shared enough information about what the levy dollars actually paid for and covered. And, and the fact that it is not an increase in their taxes. That right now currently a taxpayer is not paying a dollar ninety-one or whatever that was. They're actually, they, if they looked at their current taxes, they're, they are paying a little over two thirteen. For thousand on their taxes for the current year. And going into the, the next, what we're asking for is slightly less than the amount that they're currently paying for. So I, I think there's just a lot of explanation, we need to be, we need to come forward and provide, we just need to do a better job of communicating and it needs to be all five of us out there selling this, not just one or two of us, so I think we just need to do a better job of communicating to the community the importance of, of the levy, where those dollars go, how they support education and how they support our children.
Oh, I, I agree and that's why I had Matt speak at Rotary and that was, you know, recorded and put on YouTube and that's, I also suggested Matt the video with Cougar Connections, which I thought was a really successful tool, but needed to be promoted more. What is the current levy rate per one thousand, correct?
For two thousand twenty-two, the rate's two dollars and fourteen cents.
Yeah, and it was a four-year levy?
Correct.
But we just, okay.
Correct.
But it didn't start at two fourteen?
No.
Okay, can you walk through what it was each year?
Oh boy. It was one ninety-two in two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay.
It was a dollar fifty the very first year. In year, so year two and three, I'm not sure, but it went up each year. I could look on the Benton County, if you give me some time, I could look on the Benton County website to find the actual rates.
Is it possible that we start at a lower rate? Is it possible that we start at a lower rate? And go up? Does it have to be the two thirteen? I went back and I looked at the minutes from that December meeting and we talked about possible rates and we had discussed doing two dollars.
I'm all, all for two dollars, if you remember.
No, I agree. I agree. And that was in the minutes. And we talked about a dollar ninety, two dollars, two ten, two thirteen. So can, I mean, can we come, can we come down so we can tell the community, we heard you, and we're going to bring that down and we can make that work. So we can say, we're not just giving you the same thing. You just said no on. I think that would build goodwill. I would say, we're listening and we're trying to work with you. I mean, can't, is that, is it financially feasible?
So just to try and talk about the same topic, but in a different way. The voters are actually are voting for the dollar amounts.
Correct.
And the rates are just a mathematical calculation of valuation. So for two thousand twenty-two, the levy amount is three million six hundred and sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And that is, again, at the two dollars and fourteen cents. Think I have, and certainly we can, I mean, two dollars, I could calculate what it would be at two dollars. It's probably going to be a little bit less than what we're collecting this year. I'd have to calculate it. But there are some districts that step it up each year, you know, two dollars, two ten, two fifteen, whatever. The maximum is two fifty. And that's always the risk or the challenge, I should say, is what do we feel the taxpayers would approve? You go for two fifty, I mean, probably not going to be approved. Two fourteen, two thirteen, wasn't approved. So again, there's different ways of skinning the cat.
Yeah, it's, it's lower than some of the surrounding districts, I would say. And part of the, I guess, the, the years, the years, I think that we run it, if, if it's a four-year, a three-year, a two-year, a one-year. I think that that's a discussion probably worth having. The rates, I think that it's already, the rate that we're running it at isn't going to increase district funding as, you know, as much as, as much as it just keeps it whole. It keeps it at a status quo. And the danger on going out lower is that it, it almost communicates that we, we didn't really need initially what we had asked for. That we were liars in some respect. And, you know, we tried to hoodwink voters. And so what, you know, when we pull back and say, well, we're going to run it at a lower rate, I, I think that there's a healthy amount of skepticism there with taxpayers saying, well, see, we told you so. They didn't really need it in the first place. But I, I think that's the, that's the other piece. And then if we run it too, too low of a rate, we can manage, but we still get into the conversation about reducing programs, reducing enforcement, things like that that really are probably the best for the health of the district. But I would ask the board to consider those, those pieces, you know, those perspectives in making decisions.
The, the background with the collection amount is that we've assumed a three percent growth each year. So that's why the rate has stayed the same. So if you take the three million seven eighty-two, you can, for two thousand twenty-three and compare it to two thousand twenty-two, it's a three percent increase. So the rate, again, the concept is the rate stays the same. The amount goes up because there's three percent growth in property valuation.
So is this a four-year?
Three-year.
Okay, three-year. I know one thing that has a lot of people worried is inflation. And the cost of everything is, is just really unstable right now. But if we looked at a two-year, and hopefully at the end of two years, things are, are more stable. I mean, is that a possibility? Or, I know that everybody's going, oh, things are not going to be a whole lot more stable, but.
I'll throw my two cents in. I want to start off by saying the whole two-dollar comment has nothing to do with, we don't do or don't need the money. I just hate when you run things on a dollar ninety-one or two thirteen. It's five or zero. Stick with the program. You know, if we go out and we ask for what it costs to run things and we're turned down again, they obviously want things run differently. That's why I'm going to look at it. I would still hopefully change to two just because of the budget, but just because it's me, not because of anything else.
Two, rather go to two fifteen.
Yeah, actually, I would.
Is my turn?
Yep.
Okay, I'll probably beat the horse to death again, but the thing I've received from most people that I've talked to, they're just shocked that it failed because Coster doesn't fail levies. I think we had a low voter turnout. I think people were upset about COVID. I've had a few comments about, boy, you know, my taxes are going to go up. I do know that our flyers, I was told, sent in the post office because that type of mailing, they do when they get to it. And I had people say, I got the, the, the voting ballot one day and the flyer came the next. I don't think that was our fault. I think it was time that you got the information first. I'm, I'm kind of old school. I've never made a secret of that. Every generation helps pay for the next. When my kids were in school, we had elderly neighbors that were saying, I'm voting for the levy. Now, we're in the same boat. I don't have children in the school district, district, but it's my obligation. And I believe a lot of people feel that way. You know, we help pay for the next generation. If we fail our kids, we fail. I've had some people approach me to be on the citizens committee. There are people that really want to pass it. And although I'm, like Andy and I like round figures, I do think it sends a message if we reduce it. Well, we really didn't need that much money. We'll lower it. So then we're going to be cutting programs, just the same. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Well, I talked once. I don't know if Jason wants to go.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I think, I think saying we, we asked for this much and it failed, and so we're going to ask for less. And the, that we asked for too much and we can run it for less and that we, we lied to the community, I think that line of thinking doesn't make any sense. I think the community said no to that levy. And I think if we go back and give them the same thing, we're saying, okay, now, now we're really trying to pull you. Now, now pass it again. We're giving you the exact same thing, you know. Don't look at the man behind the curtain, you know. They said no once. I said, you know, I think no is no. You don't go back and ask again. I think we have to change it. I think we should do it. In two thousand and twenty-one, you said it was a dollar ninety-two, Craig. Let's ask for a dollar ninety-two. Do something just, you know, to show that we can do it lower. Cut corners, Matt. Last week of the meeting, you said we were overstaffed. Well, if we're overstaffed and we can do it at a dollar ninety-two sufficiently staffed, then that's what we do. It's better to have some money than no money. And we need to have this levy pass. If we fail it a second time, it's, it's our students that are impacted, number one. And then our teachers and the buildings. But what that carries throughout the community, of a community that the district failed the levy twice in two months, that's a, that's a community people don't move to with their kids, is a community people leave from. Businesses are going to follow. It's just going to be a domino effect. It affects the entire community when the schools are failing. We need to put out a levy that will pass and we need to work it. The flyers may have sat in the post office, but they should have been there sooner. And there should have been more than one flyer. We recycled the flyer from the last levy in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and then just changed the numbers. We didn't do anything different. We didn't think outside the box. We didn't have somebody, you know, with a communication background, look at it and say, what should we do? And one flyer for a tax increase when people are already paying on the bond, you know, wasn't enough. We need to educate. This is the levy and it's separate from the bond, and this is why. And we put, there wasn't even one letter to the editor, not from anybody in this community. And there should have been a letter writing campaign. And I think certainly the leaders of this board and administration should have had a letter to the editor at the bare minimum. I mean, it was really an expectation like, well, the community's going to pass it. We're going to put in the minimal effort and that's the result we got. So we need to meet them where they want us and come down on that rate. That's it.
Jason?
So I've got kind of, I think I have some of the same sentiments that everybody else has about the levy. I was, I was hoping that our work session last, whatever day, I don't even remember what day that was. That was the last week? I can't remember. That we could have hashed out a lot of these, these issues at that point and come to a consensus. I think part of this levy comes down to the earlier comments I made about justifying expenses. Part of, and Craig, this, I, I did some quick math, so I'm hoping he can answer this if, if you, if you got a second. So if I do my math right, if I take the twenty-one, twenty-one-year levy dollars at three point two million divided by two, this is just rudimentary math, divided by two, so we get half of the twenty-one and half of the twenty-two for this school year budget, correct?
We'll actually get half of that and then half of the twenty-two, you know, three point six. So, so, so it's half of the twenty-one and half of the twenty-two.
So if I, if I look at what we brought in for this levy this year, it's roughly three point four million dollars.
That's correct. Yep.
I look at, if we did the same thing, if we looked at the same numbers for next year for the twenty twenty-three budget, it's three point seven and change. It's, if I, if I'm doing my math right. I did the same thing, divided the twenty-three estimate by the twenty-two estimate.
Yeah, it's probably not going to be three points. Well, it probably will be close. So you take three, six, six, eight, nine, sixty divided by two, right?
Yep.
One point eight. Would you just write that down for me? Million eight thirty-four, three, seven, eight, two, oh, three, two divided by two, plus one, eight, three, four, four eighty. Yeah, three point seven.
Okay, so, so my next question is this, the budget that was approved for twenty-one, twenty-two school year has a deficit of one point six five million dollars.
That's correct.
By staying the same, we're only going to go up three hundred thousand roughly. So that brings our next year's budget down to one point three million dollar deficit. So I think we have a larger problem than just the levy.
I agree.
And I think it's, it's part of justifying all of our expenses and making this a tight ship. You know, the easiest thing to, to get rid of and talk about is programs and people, right? But that, that's not the, that's not the right questions to ask. And, and I think we need to ask, go into a deep dive and look at, you know, the maintenance budgets, look at transportation, look at what we're spending and making sure we can justify every single expense for the school district. And like I mentioned before, you know, the, the school district gets a revolving amount of money every single year, roughly the same amount, adding and subtracting different, you know, what, what we had last year. You know, it's in here somewhere. Anyways, we went up a little bit from last year, like maybe a million dollars, five hundred thousand from last year to this year in our income, our revenue. I'll have that paper in the stack here somewhere.
Well, it'll be on our financials.
So, so we were at three point eight last year was our budget and we're at forty million, or thirty-eight million last year, forty million last year. So it's like a million and a half.
Right.
So like I said, I, I think it's a larger question that we all have to ask ourselves, especially as we come into budget cycles here. I, I'm assuming it's in the next couple of months.
Yep. I started doing all the projections.
Yeah.
So, you know, the state's going to have their budget hopefully done here in the next couple of weeks.
So I think as we start to do this budget cycle and, you know, the, we, and I'm assuming this is how it works, but the department heads will bring forward their budget, you know, for, and I'm, I'm, I'm hoping it's by building, but I don't know if it is. But the part of what I, I think needs to be done is we really need to look at our expenses. We cannot continue to run the way we're running and there's got to be a way to make, make us more efficient. Maybe there isn't. But we're still on a downwards, downward slide.
I will say that the next step is certainly I give an annual or I give a monthly report. But then eventually I've got to say, okay, here's my estimate for the end of the year. I mean, you know, I can't wait till July or August to do that. I have to make assumptions and projections and all those kind of things to come up with, you know, we're really going to spend one point six million. We're going to spend, you know, one point eight. We can only spend one point two. I mean, you know, all these things have to, you know, it's pretty big tape that I run to try and calculate it, but it's, it's an estimate, of course, until we actually know the end of the year. But that's, that's just how it works. A budget's a budget. It's an estimate. It's not actual. You know, there's, sometimes we have the fund balance because of, you know, a boiler that gets blown up or, you know, whatever, fails. So, it's always a the balancing act of how much fund balance do we need for a rainy day and, but yeah, we, on paper, we can't keep spending one point six million dollars or we'll be done in two more year, you know, two years. So COVID has, I mean, when Matt first came aboard, you know, I was telling him, hey, Matt, we've, you know, we've got issues, you know, our, our fund balance is precarious. We're overstaffed. Our enrollment's declining. It's the perfect storm. And to be frankly honest, COVID has kind of pushed that down the road a couple of years. You know, last year we had a deficit on paper, but with COVID and those things, our fund balance actually increased, you know, over a million dollars. So it was almost a two million dollar swing. But just my feeling, my take is that this is real money that we're going to be spending this year. I mean, you can look at the financials through December and we're, we're at one point eight, I think, deficit so far this year. Now, again, it goes up and down based on cash flow and those kind of things and taxes and, but we, we, past few days, we've got a big board with, where the various categories. The, the, the main issue is the state has their funding formula and we exceed in almost all areas, the state funding formula. And the levy is meant to fill those gaps. Now, obviously it doesn't fill enough of the gaps, right? So that's an issue that we have management-wise to to figure out why and, and what to do about it. So.
Just, yeah, I would, I would just add that the levy, so the, Craig talks about the state has a formula. It's a prototypical school model that they staff a school based upon a number. And so here's how many you get. So all that to say that levy, your levy is really almost about local control. So based upon that model, the state allows local, you know, local districts to fundraise and put money towards whatever programs they choose to that are unique to their school. One of our programs, as I talked about last time, was it's security officers in every single building. That was a priority. And so when we talk about that, we also talk about, we presented it last time, one point two million. But if we're unable to pass it, we forfeit that money from the state as well. And so we're leaving money on the table. So some of that, we've So some of that we've invested into staffing to ease the workload, um, has been the discussion, but, when they switched to McCleary, in fact, I remember in my interview process, there was, um, some budgeting, you know, budget came up. And I, I knew, I knew that there were, you know, some problems there. Uh, when I did a real deep dive, you know, initially when I was preparing for the interviews, I knew that there were some, going to be probably some issues. When we started digging into it, um, and that was part of my first year, we did compression planning, Deanna did, around budgetary cuts. And, um, we looked at a lot of efficiencies, we looked at attrition, we looked at all these different things. In fact, I, I think I wrote a report for the board once upon a time. I, I can still send, if I find it, I'll send it out to, um, to the new board members. But yeah, there's some things that need, need to be corrected. I'm hopeful that with the new developments and enrollment will go up instead of going down. But it, there's a number of factors here that will compound it. Um, we have labor unions who are also asking for more and a lot of those contracts are still open. And so that's, you know, uh, kind of in tandem with this, that things are also getting more expensive and people are asking for more. And so, yeah, it, um, there are efficiencies, I think, to be found. Uh, we can do, do better, but at the end of the day, some of the unique, unique things that we want to do are attached to money. So we'll limit our local control about, do we want this curriculum? Do we want, uh, this type of technology? Do we want this type of security program? Do we want these types of athletic programs? So that's a consideration too.
So there's some numbers that I've been working on. And I don't have them specifically down to the dollar, but in order to generate the three million six sixty eight for two thousand twenty two, our valuation is like one point seven billion, one, one billion, seven fourteen million. So if we use that rate at a dollar ninety two, we generate three point, three million, two hundred and ninety one thousand. And so again, the rate we're, the dollar amount we're getting right now, it's already been approved is a three million, six sixty eight, nine sixty. If we did a two dollar amount, it'd be three point four million. So those are just, just mathematically. So two dollars is three point four, three million, four twenty eight, four twenty nine. One point nine is three million, two ninety one. The three million, six sixty eight is what's, is what's being collected for the twenty two calendar year. Again, not saying that, again, that that challenges, what, what do we think the voters will pass? It's two bucks, then two bucks. If it's two years, two years. That's, that's the difficult challenge the board needs to make. And I guess, been around this block a number of times, we'll make it work.
I, I honestly think we're going to get some students back when the mask mandate lifts. Because we know people that don't have children in school because of that. Does anybody even have a vague idea how many we might get back or based on how many we've lost because of that or not?
I do want to say that the state, uh, so now all we do, we get the three point, you know, four from our local taxpayers, but the state kicks in about another one point six, one point seven. So the budget for levy plus the state portion is like five point one rounded. If the levy fails the second time, we'll still receive two point two. So it's, but it's, that's a two point nine million dollar decrease in revenue for the twenty two, twenty three school year. So what we were doing just mathematically is looking at, okay, worst case scenario, we need two point nine plus one point six is to have a balanced budget. That's a big number, but that's the exercise. And let me just say one last thing and then I'll hush up. If, if the, I mean, the date is still an important consideration too. Whether it's now, you know, uh, April or August or November. We, we do have a, if, if the date is October, it's October. If the date is, the date is April, then we really should pass a resolution tonight. We can have the attorneys change the numbers. Continue, you know, the board can say, you know, here's the numbers we want. We, we pass this resolution contingent upon, you know, two years, two dollars, dollar ninety two, whatever. But if, if it's April, we really need to do something tonight.
Do you know of any other, the, the districts that, there's other districts that had failed levies as well? Are they running in? Are they running, uh, are they going to be running in this April timeframe? So they're all just kind of reissuing?
I believe so.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't about the rates, but as far as the election.
Okay. So our costs for the election is still going to be shared amongst?
Yeah, only in our county is going to be Kennewick. Finley, I think, was by five. So we'll have a pretty substantial portion compared to.
Do we know what our, what our bill, the Benton County, Kinnatac and Yakima County was for February?
It takes them months to get to us. And I would kind of say that, yeah, I mean, that's one consideration. But certainly for budgeting, for, playoff notices, those kinds of things, the earlier we know, the better it is.
I think, um, you know, after the meeting we had last week and, um, some of the issues that have been spoken up about why they voted no. I'm hoping we're moving in the right direction. I do think there is a segment, um, that may be a little bit hesitant, uh, especially when we talked out towards Witstran. You know, not only can we have a budget discussion, uh, I'm sorry, we had a levy discussion, uh, but we also had the Witstran elementary remodel and what kind of issues that's proposing to the district today. You know, I think there's a lot of pride in our Witstran, um, uh, school out there, not only with the community members that are there, uh, but the school itself. Um, so I think, um, you know, unfortunately they, they seem like they're out on an island. You know, good, bad or indifferent, but I think that's a pretty viable part of not only this discussion, but you know, as we talk about starting that remodel project. You know, the, I don't even know where I'm going with that, but I think that's been another excuse that, a reason, not excuse, but another reason, you know, that, that this failed. Uh, perhaps, you know, we can talk about the dollar per thousand. So we're, you know, kind of exhausted with these numbers. It's, uh, kind of a daunting deal, but perhaps maybe a better way to look at it is shortening the timeframe and revisiting this once we start going through those budget discussions. And really figure, you know, really tightening our purse strings, you know, to make it, make us as most efficient as we physically can. So I would probably, um, I would amend this, uh, where Matt, amend this resolution to a two year versus a four.
We were at three, oh, one six.
Yes.
We were running it for three.
Oh, two, three.
Wasn't it?
Twenty two, twenty three, twenty four and twenty five, am I reading that resolution right? I'm sorry, right? Oh. Gotcha. Well, maybe still go to a two, I don't know.
What dollar amount are we thinking? I'm going to vote for two.
I'm dealing with, um, inflation issue right now and, you know, especially with the senior population. I think, I think people would be more comfortable if we presented a two year plan, uh, two year process to them rather than a three year. And then let's see where things are at after two years.
Are you just talking about rate or length or?
So length of the, the levy. That's kind of taking another chance in two years, coming back out, coming back to the community and asking.
I had another little thought. I know, everybody knows that if we don't pass levies, we're going to lose programs. And, you know, we don't want to seem threatening if we highlight what things the levies provide for and make it heavy on these programs are in danger of being cut or discontinued. If, I mean, present both sides of it. I'll tell you what, Prosser's a sports town, that always has been. When, when my son found out he lives in Kennewick, he says, I was stunned that Prosser's levy failed. But Kennewick's did, but he said he has lots of friends and he heard some of them grumbling about, my God, do you know what my taxes are going to go up to? But they live in homes that are worth a million bucks. You know, that's your choice. So I think we need to make sure people see both sides, that yes, our levy provides these services for your children. If we can't pass this levy, these services are in danger. Am I stating that right? And I'm speaking up.
I think part of the problem with that is, is we say there are, you know, houses that are a million bucks. Well, I know what I paid for mine and I know it's worth three times as much. I wouldn't pay that much for it.
Yeah.
Everything has gone up.
Right, yeah, I agree with that.
I still make twenty five bucks an hour.
Yeah.
That's exactly what people are thinking.
Well, the message we heard last week was tell us exactly where the cuts are going to be. What type of, where, what programs will be cut if the levy doesn't pass? What does the levy pay for?
Right.
I mean, what it, what it boils down to, and personally, I don't think it's necessarily a funding problem, it's an unfunded mandate problem.
Right.
That's my view.
Right.
But, you know, initially eighty percent of your budget is, is labor.
Labor, people.
Uh, and everything else is in twenty percent. So when you lose, you know, one or, or two percent of your, your yearly budget, that twenty goes down to eighteen and it looks bad. So, you know, I mean, like I said before, if, if, if this goes out twice, everybody has the information, whether we decide to go up or down a little bit, two years, three years, whatever. Ultimately, if it fails again, they've said, hey, we want you to run it on this. And they kind of get what they get. I mean, yeah, I hate, hate to sound like a jerk, but just, that's the fact.
Craig, Deanna and I have been, over the past couple of days, been working on basically a two-pronged approach about worst case scenario, better case scenario that we pass it. So, um, our, probably our third meeting in March. Um, or we may even want to set up a special meeting around a, Deanna certified to do compression planning. Um, I know that some of you have been a part of that, but it's a way to kind of, tease out ideas and come about best group thinking. And so we're working, we're working on setting up one of those sessions around basically constructing a budget, what this looks like. If so, if it passes, what this looks like if it doesn't pass. There's still, as Jason mentioned, work we need to do, right? To balance things out, to make sure people have what they need. So I, I, um, yeah, it, COVID's been tough and, um, yeah, I hope it, I hope there's a light at the end of the tunnel and it doesn't get tougher from here, here forward, so.
Well, I guess we probably do need to take a look, a really strong look at what would be the positives of a two-year levy versus a three-year levy before we could automatically say, let's go with a two-year levy. What would be, uh, would there, would we be handicapping ourselves? By, would be treading right around it, having to pull back out for a levy if we went with a two-year levy? And that's one thing to, to think about, but.
Well, the other thing I think you have to think about is being optimistic that things will be better in two years.
Right. It could be worse.
I, I, I wouldn't hold my breath, you know, inflation, inflation may be more.
What's going to be best for the community?
You know, dumbass Putin may do something tonight and we wake up tomorrow, gas is ten bucks a gallon. You know, who knows? So on one hand you have two years being potentially a, a, a smaller commitment for the public, which, you know, may be beneficial from their point of view. On the other hand, two years from now, things may be way uglier than they are now.
And we'd never get one pass, yeah.
You know, it is what it is.
I guess whatever we decide.
We better figure it out quick.
Needs to be, um, that we're all in this together. You know, it has to be, um.
We kind of, we kind of have to decide tonight, don't we? To get the numbers on paper to have it in time for, for April.
Yeah.
And the one thing I do remember from sitting in with our bond guys and levy guys in the past was spring, spring stuff passes at way higher rate than fall stuff.
Yeah.
Period. I mean, it's like by ten or fifteen percent.
People are already thinking of Christmas shopping.
It's what happens when they put stuff out for Christmas in October.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, and to be, just to be honest, the biggest concern for me is if we put this off until August, we would have to give, um, tentative, um, riff out to employees, which would mean we would be riffing, giving those tentative riff notices to our youngest teachers. And, um, and they're not going to stay around. We're going to lose, we're going to lose our young teachers and, um, we've got some really good young teachers there that, that, um, are going to be awfully hard to replace. And so, um.
Jason, what do you think for, for length of time and amount?
Well, well, I, you know, I would probably just stay with the two thirteen, but go to two years. But I think again, you know, we, and granted, I'm just learning, you know, this process of, of the riffing people or whatever that, and what is the acronym for that? I, I've heard it once.
Action and force.
There you go, thank you.
I can assure you of that.
But, uh, you know, we talked about losing people and, and programs and, and that is true. But it's also the easy, you know, the easiest thing to work on, right? So, but who's all of us? Or, you know, it falls on our shoulders to figure out how to make it work. Like I said before, and then this is, is different. You know, but in the private sector, you, you try to hold on as long as you can. And losing people is your last option, not your first option. You know, some of these programs, we talk about losing, you know, it's really not, I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's probably not the right language. Cause I don't think you can, I mean, some like sports, you know, you mentioned sports. Jeannie, you mentioned sports, you know, we are a big sports camp. You know, we spend a lot of money on the sports program. You know, of course, yeah, that money is probably gonna get diverted to other sides. But doesn't mean the program's gone. You know, you just have to find different ways to make it happen, right? Yeah, and then maybe that's, maybe that's the option or, you know, you, you know, I don't know, you go fundraise. I'm not 100% sure, but there's, there's other ways to approach this. Now, I still think the levy is important. And I know I could do better in, in, you know, promotion of it. But, but I think, you know, like I said, I, I'm not gonna say it a bunch more times. But we've got a lot of other things we need to focus on to make sure our budgets are solid going forward. So I would just stick with 213 and two-year.
And Jason, I would add that in the years past, when we came up against the same problem, you know, four, five years ago, that's when like the out-of-stick travel, we even used to have cookies at our meetings. You know, but we, there were a lot of cuts that went on. And unfortunately, we find ourselves here again, but.
But let's hope things are fine then.
You know, we tightened it up once. And I agree, it needs to be tightened up again. That has to happen periodically. People get lax, but. Elisa?
I think a lot of people know that I spent most of my time growing up with my grandparents. And so I was raised by people that, you know, really made their, made their lifestyle, made, you know, really became a business and did really well. But my grandma had a drawer full of foil that she reused. Everything in our house was saved and reused. And when I look at the budget, I, I can hear, you know, their voices. I can hear, we are spending money like we have it. We're spending money like we can spend a dollar more than once. And we gotta, we gotta stop it. We gotta cut back. We need to realize we're on a budget. And I think what Jason said, cutting back your people is your last, your last option. I think we have a lot of room to cut back. I also think when I talk to people, you know, I, and my concern is putting the same information out. And they're gonna say, we just said no. And I said that multiple times. So I think we've got to give a little, like even if we come down to $2 and do two years, I think we can say, okay, we heard you. And we're trying to, you know, we do less, we're gonna tighten up, we're working on this. But another thing that we said in December, you know, if we're putting this out in February, we said, okay, that was, your, your verbatim was, okay, we have boots on the ground tomorrow to do this. And I asked lots of times, who was on the levy committee? And I was told, oh, there's a committee. I'm like, well, who's on it? Or there's a committee, was my answer. And I know, I have no idea if there was a committee or who was on it, but I mean, there's, we know now, there should be an aggressive, experienced group of Prosser citizens pushing this levy. And I did, I think as a board member, I did my part, getting Matt and getting the levy promoted and working on it that way. But I mean, people, it's, it's rough out there. I mean, the cost of milk, the cost of groceries. I think bacon at Costco is $15 a package. Okay, I mean, we can't think, you know, without taking that into consideration. Times are hard and we need to figure that out. Talk about what this money does and talk about the good things, but also say, you know, again, we're gonna tighten up and look at the spending. And I think something that's important, when you look at the precincts and how they voted on the levy, it filled the highest in the Woodstrand area, North Prosser. And I think part of that is, okay, we paid for Woodstrand to be remodeled. It's still not remodeled. Why is it last? What's going on? And I think that needs to be communicated. Last, last week with the two guys and the auctioneer style of seven to 14 million to 13 million of what it's gonna cost, that, that wasn't good. That was not good at all for this district and how we spend money and do it. So I would say two years and I like, I agree with Andy, I like an even number. $2, I'd go $1.90 and say, get, get with it and cut this budget. Watch how we're spending.
So two?
I would say, I like $1.90. But I would go to, I'd go $1.90, Price is Right style, a little better, $1.90.
What's behind door number three? Yeah, I vote we run it right away because we have to, in my mind. I can live with the two-year levy. I, like I said, I've had some people approach me that want to be on the committee and be very aggressive. And I would just simply keep it at the 214 because that's gonna be a lot of money we give up going lower, but that's just me.
Well, we have a rest on the money first.
So run it right away?
Also, yes, right away, I would go for two, just because I like the number better than 13. It's irrelevant to me whether it's two or three here. I mean, it's, it's, you know, there, there's negatives and benefits about both ways. So it's, it's irrelevant. And if the consensus is two, I'm on it two.
And I'm on for the 213 and two-year. Looks like we have a consensus of 213, two years.
Two years.
I'll go 210. That's a slightly better number.
About, I didn't know that.
So I'll take a motion to approve a motion. Well, we have one on the table from Andy, motion by Andy, seconded by Jeannie to go out to approve resolution number 0122, the replacement of an expiring maintenance operations and education program levy. But that would be revised to say that it was a two-year levy going out in April for $2.13 over two years. All in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So all yes. Board members will be actively involved in that.
You gotta sit tight, is a roll call, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to that. So that was all yes and it is a resolution. So that does require a roll call. So Jason? Elisa?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Peggy, yes. All yes.
We did, sorry to make you do this, they would like to sign a copy.
I thought you have three? Okay, thank you. What's the, what's the change again? Do you need to come in and sign it?
Here, and make it a, make a notation? Yeah.
Could you take care of that and go sign it?
I think that's just official, it's scratched out.
Yeah, I agree with Jason, as long as we all initial it.
Uh-oh.
Hello, can you hear me now? Is my mic dead?
I can't believe my mic was dead. Okay, what was said was the, uh, we are going to sign three documents that we need to train, we're gonna scratch out the date and the year. Uh, it's a two-year levy instead of a three-year levy. So we're gonna make that modification on the document.
Were there comments on Zoom about the rate? I mean, we voted, but what were, were there, was there feedback?
Okay, because we didn't have the mic. Okay, so what we did was we, we passed resolution number 0122, replacement of expiring maintenance operations and educational program levy. Uh, we will, it's a two-year levy for, it will go out for vote in April. We'll change that levy, but it will be for $2.13. Oh, for Pete's sake, no, I'm too loud. Is that better? Okay, so it's the $2.13 for two years instead of three years. And we did a roll call vote and all board members voted aye, yes.
And I guess Peggy, my recommendation is that you just sign the last page. Because I'll, and then we will get with Jake Mio or his partner tomorrow, change it. I can scan and send you the original document so you're comfortable with what, as far as signatures, we just need.
Board members are signing three pages? And all board members agree to actively work towards passing this, the, the levy? So thank you, everybody. And I've got two microphones, one to me. All right. Thank you very much. We will move on. The next item on the agenda is the award of, awarding of desktop computers. And I entertain a motion to approve the awarding of desktop computers.
Move to award the desktop computers to Micro K in the amount of $50,400.
So motion by Jason?
I'll second.
Seconded by Andy. Any discussion?
I have a question. Shauna, so does it include monitors, the computer, everything? Just the tower? Okay. Are we gonna have to buy everything else too to be updated? Or do we have the equipment in place to continue? So that $2,000 a tower? That's a lot of money.
Yeah, okay. So you got your questions answered, Elisa?
I did.
Okay, so motion by Jason, seconded by Andy, are in favor of approving the awarding of desktop computers, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 Resolution Number 0222. And I've asked Jason to speak about this resolution.
Basically, you know, this resolution, I think I gave it to everybody last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. You know, basically what, you know, what this does is, you know, it's a resolution giving us local control over, you know, I guess it's healthcare decisions or specifically, you know, I think masking or you know, probably can include vaccinations, et cetera. But basically, it just is letting the governor know that we want local control over COVID-19 mitigation measures. And I think, I don't know. I guess, is there any questions? I mean, that's kind of the summation of the resolution.
Right. Okay, so everyone has seen the resolution. I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 0222. Uh, it's the resolution concerning local control of health measure.
Move to approve Resolution 0222.
Second.
The motion by Andy, seconded by Jason, are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, and it's roll call. So Jason?
Yes.
Elisa?
Yes.
Uh, Jeannie? Andy?
Yes.
Peggy, yes. I have the resolution here. I will sign it and pass it. And thank you for bringing the spirit and hallelujah.
I would also like to add another motion. I would like to motion that we make masks optional on March 21st.
I'll second, I'll second that motion. Yeah, I'll second it. The make mask optional on March 21st was made by Jason, seconded by Elisa.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah. Well, that's open for interpretation. I don't have a lot of faith in, in that. And I just want to make sure that we as a board are gonna go that direction the 21st, no matter what.
We have a new phantom variant that's, the ominous music came on the news tonight and it's, it's horrible. It's so bad that people don't even know it, have it.
All right, so motion was by Jason, seconded by Elisa, are in favor, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So all yes. Optional masks, March 21st. Got it. All right, the next item under this action items is is the Department Committee for the Local Voters Pamphlet. And that is Dr. Tim Straub.
Prepared for us. In 2020, legislature passed a law that required all county auditors to produce a local voters pamphlet for any primary, general, or special elections. That was effective in July 2021. So we posted on the district's website and on Facebook, seeking applicants that are interested in being appointed or committed to write either a for statement or an against statement on the levy. The deadline was at noon today. And we received one person who was interested in writing a for statement and no one to write an against statement. So recommendation, and the person that would like to be appointed is Dr. Timothy Straub to write a for statement for the pamphlet. So I think that needs to be in the form of a motion that the board appoint Timothy Straub to write a for statement to be included in the Benton County Click-It-That County Local Voters Pamphlet.
So I would entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Timothy Straub to the Committee for Local Voters and for the for the levy.
For the ballot measure.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Andy, seconded by Elisa. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so all yes.
So it's Dr. Tim Straub?
S C R A U B.
A U B.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, then we're adding the minutes from the last board meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the, the minutes from the last regular board meeting.
Move to approve the minutes from February 9, 2022 board meeting.
Motion by Andy.
In Spanish.
Motion by Andy. Seconded by Jason. Any questions or comments on the minutes?
I do have a question, a comment on the minutes. And I did email you to let you know I had a comment about the minutes. And I work with Selena on the minutes. We've changed from, I think before it was just a straight transcript, transcript of what was happening, almost word for word. And we're doing, we've gone to action minutes, which is what's required by Robert's Rules of Order and the Open Public Meeting Act. But when you look at that, chat, chat notes are a public record. And chat is required to be available during a Zoom meeting. It can't be shut off. So that record has to be preserved somehow. And this district hasn't been doing that. Other public entities are including it as Attachment A to their minutes. It's a really simple way to do it, to preserve that record and that it was associated with that meeting. So the chat notes would correspond with what happens.
Can we just put it in a cloud?
We, we did check into that, Elisa. And we did check with our attorney and we did. We, we did check into that, uh, Elisa, and, uh, we did check with our attorney, and we do, they are public records. We do need to preserve them. And, um, we're working with, um, we're working with, uh, Selena on how we want to preserve them, but we will be preserving them. It'll be part of our discussion when we start talking about how we're gonna be preserving public records, because there's a lot of different public records we need to talk about. How are we gonna preserve for the future? So.
My question would be then, how do people know where the context of those chat notes go to if they're not associated with the minutes of that meeting?
That's all stuff we're gonna work through.
So, my proposal was that we include the chat minutes as an attachment A going forward.
I understand. And we will be looking into all of that, but, uh, we do need to preserve them. We understand that, and we're working through a process, so, but thank you.
How much storage does it take to put that much video? Couple hours worth?
It's not, it's not video. It's just.
So, we do have to preserve the video.
It's just a copy that's attached.
It's.
Oh, okay. I'm over my iPhone.
For this meeting, it was, for this, the minutes of, that we're looking to approve, it was like four lines. Yeah. So, it'd just be a one-page attachment.
Do we actually see the video?
No, we're working, yeah. We're working through it.
All right, I'm on.
Yeah. So, my, my suggestion would be a motion to approve the minutes amended to include Attachment A, the chat notes from the meeting, to be included as Attachment A.
We're good on it. Thank you.
I did. I made a motion.
Okay.
Will, will we have? We have them for last meeting minutes. They're somewhere, right?
Right. They were in the initial draft of the initial, um, I believe, board packet that went on Friday.
So, we were doing a attachment A. She would type in whatever was said.
She just prints it out. Or, I think she prints it out. Yeah.
Fine, Elisa. I, I did, I did, as I told you, I did review it with the attorney. The difference is that the chat notes are, uh, they're, they were not, in, information that came directly through, um, the actual, um, board process. They were just random notes that people ordered on Facebook, which is fine. I'm working with the attorney and I'm working with the administrators on it. We're working on a process. We will, I know that they're open public information. I'm working on a process. I will let you know when that's done. I've taken your thoughts into consideration. We will take care of it. Thank you for your thoughts. We are moving on.
But that's a motion.
I'm sorry, we're not, we are not dealing with it now. Thank you very much.
No. That's not how Robert's Rules of Order works.
Thank you, Elisa. I'm not moving on with it.
How, so how are you addressing the motion?
We're not.
There was a motion and a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Please, you should call for a vote.
I can call for a vote?
Aye.
All right.
No. Okay.
I don't get that.
Yeah. No, I'm working on it. I told you that.
Are you gonna vote yes, no, or abstain?
I'm gonna vote no, right.
Okay. So, that was three yeses to amend the minutes to turn, include the chat notes as.
No. We're moving on.
That's all right. That's.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, volunteer coaches.
So, I want to be clear, we have no approved minutes, and there was a motion that was seconded and voted by the majority of this board and was being ignored by the board president.
That's right.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. So, my next question regarding the coaches. Or, yeah.
So, we're, we're tabling the minutes.
I was right.
Okay. I just wanted, we didn't mention that, so I just wanna make sure we're, if we're gonna table the minutes for the next meeting.
Yep.
And then, yeah, and then we had the motion, I guess.
And, and we approved it. So, at the next meeting.
It'll have Amendment A on it.
Exactly.
Volunteer coaches.
So, my question about the volunteer coaches. It's for wrestling. Is this for wrestling that just finished or wrestling for next year?
Wrestling that just finished.
Okay. And it said paperwork was submitted. And what's the paperwork?
Just the volunteer coach paperwork.
Is there like a, a background check is my question?
Yep.
Okay. So, an application, a background check, anything else?
Don't know.
I'm spare.
Well, I mean.
Vaccine record?
And, and middle school wrestling still going.
Okay.
What they are is the coaches that went to state.
Okay.
And they, for instance, you'll notice one of the names is very similar to mine.
I thought it was your name.
Yeah, it's, it's my youngest son. He, he was a volunteer coach the whole season, but they couldn't go to state with the kids until they filled out the official paperwork, even though he's been down here three nights a week for so that's what it is.
Okay. Is it possible to include a little bit more on that next time?
Yeah.
That, that it was coaches that went to state. So, I did have people say, why are, why are we approving volunteer coaches this season?
I actually made the same joke at home.
Well, we, geez. We can, there was, um, there's an also, there was also an issue that the athletic director was working through with a resignation before the end of the season. Um, so that's kind of part and parcel why there's so many there, you know, he's subbing people in due to that.
And then, who do we use to do the background check? Do we contract that out?
Kim has, Kim has, I think, does it through Washington State Patrol.
Yeah. I had to have it through. Let's help him with football and stuff. It's state, we see the state patrol sheriff.
Those were my questions. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to discussion items. Uh, first item is the.
We did not.
Who's gotta approve this first?
Yeah, we didn't actually do that.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we have, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve the volunteer coaching.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, so. Uh, Elisa, are in favor of approving volunteer coaches?
Aye.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion COVID-19 and masking.
Okay, so, uh, I had this on here just to touch base about the, the governor's, um, talk and his directives about opening, uh, or removing masks and masks being voluntary. We'll, we'll probably have staff and students who choose to wear them, and so we'll be uh, working with our labor partners on that, making sure that everybody feels protected if they need, um, KN ninety-fives or whatever mask they need to continue in their job. The other piece that I was gonna note on this, uh, was just that even though there's a date, there's still a lot of pressure to move that date up and to move that date forward. And so, um, just locally, our E S D, um, published a letter on behalf of all superintendents, uh, to the governor, uh, pressing him to move the date forward, um, even sooner into March. And so, we'll see if that gains any traction. So, that's all I had for that.
And Matt, as a side note, I do know that multiple local districts have all gone away from, uh, staff and so on, having to wear N ninety-fives, just saying any paper mask is cool or.
Yeah, and we've, we've done the same as long as it's two ply.
Yeah.
Um, the, the catch on that is there, there will probably be people with, um, you know, immune disorders or, or what have you. And so, we'll have staff and students, I think, that will still want extra protection. Um, we invested in air purifiers. I think that we'll have a number of staff that still uh, want those in their classrooms and ask for those in their classrooms. And so, um, really is trying to be as accommodating as we can and understanding as we can as employers, um, going back to, um, yeah, just trying to treat people the way that, you know, you wanna be treated or you wanna be accepted, so.
Okay. Are we ready to move off of that? On to Safety and Security Report.
So, this one was on here, uh, for Andy and Jason, um, if they wanted to talk about. The Safety and Security Committee convened. A couple principals were there. I was there. Um, our security officers were there. Uh, it was a pretty productive meeting. It was for about an hour uh, before our last meeting around the levy and the construction. Um, so, Jason and Andy, um, I don't know if you wanna brief the board on, on kind of the discussions there and the actions there as well.
Well, I think, uh, I was, I'm not gonna say pigeonholed into being the, um, the chairperson for this or whatever, the, the, this, uh, sick honor. That's right. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Um, but, uh, like, like Matt said, I, I do think if it was a little clunky, you know, it was our first meeting, um, I can only, it'll only get better. I think we had great discussions. Um, it'll, it'll point up as we move forward, but I think it was a good opportunity to, to have a, you know, a number of the principals and, um, um, the security there. And it was, it was a great conversation, and I think it's just gonna get better from there. So, it was, it was, uh, it was a good first start. I don't know if Andy has anything to add.
Oh, just, it was very productive. Uh, it feels very good to pick up kind of where we left off a couple years ago when the zombie apocalypse started. Uh, but yeah, no, it's gonna be very productive moving forward, and there's, man, there's a lot of stuff that needs done, fore and moly. I, I didn't realize how far behind we had gotten, so.
How often are you gonna meet?
Third Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it'll be, I think, at six is what we decided. And then moving forward, you know, we're gonna start like we did before, have, uh, you know, the security team will bring forward their top concerns, and we'll, you know, try to tackle them one at a time.
Yeah, they were, they were given homework assignments at the last meeting, and so, um, they'll bring back that work, and then, um, we'll go from there.
Great.
I do have maybe just one more thing to add. Um, I was able to, um, one of the schools I, I was able to get to, to have like a security kind of, just an overview, uh, was Witstran, and it was, it was good to, to get out there. I've honestly never toured the school, so it was kind of a, a good opportunity. But there are some things that I think need to be, um, remedied, and I, I think it's in the process, but I'm not sure. I definitely would like follow-up is lighting. Uh, there's a number of lights out there. It's out in the middle of, you know, pretty much nowhere. Um, and lighting, I think, is critical. I think a lot of it's been addressed, and, um, you know, I appreciate Brian getting on that. Uh, but there's still a couple, there's some, um, I guess it'd be dark spots in that building that, that need to be addressed, and, um, a couple of them are up on the gym roof. Um, and I, I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure why we needed a lift to do that. Uh, maybe Brian can clarify. Um, I, I would think there'd be a rough access somewhere. That's, um, to, to replace some of those lights, just to give more of a, you know, lighted around that, that building for, you know, teachers, staff, parents, stuff like that, kids.
We'll check into the, the necessity of, of a lift to do that work if we can't resolve it some other way.
I got a forty-foot ladder if they need it.
No running by. Okay. The next item on the discussion is meeting start times and presentations.
Okay. I request that this be put on the agenda. I had a couple of points. Um, um, as everybody's aware, the voucher session of our meetings takes quite a while. Um, everybody but me that has been elected, and I'm sure when you get a vote, you get the trust of the people that voted you in. They expect all of us to review the vouchers, and I pick up the phone and call Craig if I have a question. Uh, he's always very congenial. Explains something if I have a question. So, I thought before we'd had a previous mention of a financial committee, which I'm gung-ho for to save time in our meeting, or short of that, to maybe do a summary of the question vouchers and just do a report. I'm, I'm just like, saving time. Um, if anybody wanna talk about the other, uh, discussion thing, I think we need to move our meeting times to six. In all my reading, there's lots of schools that have their meetings at five-thirty and six. I think it would be good for our student representatives, for our administrators that show up for meetings and others that come and give reports. Um, our district office employees, they're hard workers and they do a wonderful job for us. And I've had a lot of comments from the public that the meetings are just, they go so late, they enjoy them, but they have to get up and go to work in the morning. So, I would like to make a motion to start our meetings at six. Now, the third meeting of the month, you guys have a six, that one, we could have the public meeting at seven or work on it somehow.
Well, that's still a work session.
Yeah.
The odd one, so.
Uh huh. Yeah, I just think it would be beneficial to everybody to start at six.
Actually.
There's a lot of morning people in the world.
Are you talking about all meetings?
No, our, our spread board meetings to start at six.
Okay.
Cause we're, uh, we're at nine-twenty-six. We're actually almost a little ahead of schedule. We might get out of here at quarter till ten tonight, but it's normally ten or after.
That was cool about after curfew and I, I'm scared to ten now.
Yeah. We still have half hour of board, the board meeting.
Yeah.
So, I know that there was some debate, um, about the, the chat notes, uh, the chat notes and the minutes, and, um, it appeared as if that was tabled. I wouldn't, um, not to jump into or interfere with the board's business, but we actually need to, we actually need to, um, have that policy um, and redo it. So, it's, we put the third, uh, week as a work session, and so we'll be reviewing that at the next meeting and approving it. So, it's, it's within the policy. And so, we could actually, if, if the board wants to alter times, um, that would be the, that would be the time to actually do that, do that work.
Right.
Um, so that will be a part of, the board had asked for, um, a third meeting and it to be a work session and it to be um, ongoing, so it's not posted as a special meeting, and we can alter that, um, agenda.
Most could always start at six.
To clarify, you can't take action during a work session. You can only discuss things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So, the following meetings.
I, I misspoke as to what it was.
No, no. I just wanted to make sure, cause the word action was used. Take action at that meeting, but we can't do that.
Yeah, so the, uh, first meeting in March is when it would. We would, well, we would have that policy to review and change anything that we want to in that for the third meeting and then the fourth meeting, and from there on, therefore, we're. So, um, I, yeah, I would just ask that, um, may, maybe that's a consideration. Um, but a, again, it's not to interfere with the board's business.
Uh, on the policy for meetings, can we, I'm not, I'm not sure we could do this, but can we take our normal board meeting, which is the second, fourth, fourth Wednesday of the month? And it's, so far it's here. Can we do the third meeting at a different location in, within that policy? I just wanted, I, I just wanna make sure. Okay.
What are your thoughts on that, Jason?
Well, I think, uh, for the work session, because, um, thanks to Sean, we, we kind of discussed presentations that, that the library room would probably benefit us better. Um, have, have the screen and the, what I, it's not a projector anymore, I don't think, but whatever that thing is, and, uh, you know, we can actually have a, a good work session with presentations and so forth.
Yeah, the short throw projector. Um, so, yeah, it, you can have it wherever you want. It just has to be the same location once it's into policy, so.
My additional comment, Jeannie, I think it's a great idea to have a finance committee, and I thought of that, I mean, I thought that from the very beginning.
Like we've mentioned before.
Uh, and I think it's, I think it's, it's great that we're, you know, can have something like that. Because I, I mean, not that I'll ever stop looking at the vouchers.
Yeah, I don't either.
But the, the committee can kind, kind of mitigate some of that, um, within the board, so. The, the committee can kind of mitigate some of that within the board, so.
Yeah, cause I called Craig and like he's sharp. We are so lucky to have him. You owe me a coffee, Craig, I think. No, he doesn't, no. But he always gets right back to me if he's tied up. You know, so I, I, I just think, I know the public has trust in all of us. Otherwise, well, four of us anyway. I got appointed, they didn't have any choice. That way, if you want to have a either the committee or give a report on the ones that, you know, like we had a bill for baby blonde service and why are, why were we doing that? Well, for backflow testing. You know, so they know that you are paying attention. And but I really felt strongly about the meeting time being moved up. And I think it would benefit everybody. But I'm an idol. I can, I can, we could start the meeting at midnight. But I live with a morning person. He's up at four and then bed at nine thirty or something like that. But, you know.
I have no preference on the meeting start time, but it can't be made by a motion. It has to be made through a resolution. And we just changed our meeting location and discussed the time changing it from six to seven a few weeks ago. I, there may, and I think there is a limitation on how many times per year you can change your official meeting place and time by resolution. I don't know if you can do it more than one time in a calendar year. So that is something to look into.
Now, we'll have to check.
Oh, since we haven't done it appropriately. Can you check into that for us, Matt?
That's what you said.
I mean, these people work long hours.
So if we can, if, if it's possible for us to change that starting time to six o'clock for board meetings, I'm gonna have Matt check with Sean. That would work. And then the other thing we would look at is setting it up so that the mid, the, the extra meeting a month would be in the library. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Okay. And that's what works for you, the work that you're doing. But I would like to see us also have, I mean, we can be working on, you're working on on the safety and security, but we can be working on projects too. Like, the, I mean, there's lots of projects. We could be working on dress code and then be bringing that back to the full board for discussion. And if we needed to, to, there's so many to choose. Which one would you like to be working on next? Alyssa?
See, on this table today, I think what is urgent, and I've said this for the last year. I've said it at every meeting I've had a chance to. Ray Tollcatcher is still our official public records officer. We need a resolution appointing always a superintendent or whomever. And if we hire somebody down the road, it's a simple fix. I think that needs to be done. And the public records or class policy, uh, public records policy, we have the drafts on the attorney. Just approve it and you get done. And I think with what was delivered today, that is top priority.
Okay, so I, I think the three of us would be in agreement that that would be something that the three of us could start together on.
I think we're having two different meetings though. We're not having a work session while they have a security meeting.
And then jump right into the public, okay, yeah, all right.
First time all night. Man, I was almost
The next Wednesday, that extra Wednesday that we have, that you're working on safety and security. We will then move right into working on the public records. But that will also be in that same location that I've served in the library?
Yeah, that works because it's not the official meeting. So ideally, what a work session does, you have your agenda for the next meeting and you have like everything in here that we've discussed with great detail. You workshop it at your work session. So that you don't have the lengthy discussions on the record. But I think it's important to remember. You know, we've had election in November and then the levy fail. And we were elected, we had contested elections and won. I think everybody else here was appointed and then ran uncontested for Genie at some point. And what that tells me is that I wouldn't be here if people didn't want me here asking questions. If they wanted to keep on, keep it on, things would have stayed the same way. And so we still have to have some questions. I get feedback. We get feedback on chat. But people like these questions and they want to know what's going on. No, I think we need a financial committee, but I just want it to be in the mind, there's still gonna be, we're still gonna ask questions. Oh, yeah. I mean, I think maybe less questions, but I mean, I don't want it to be the perception, there's gonna be no questions.
From, from my point of view, and I've had this discussion with Jason, I would be disappointed if you didn't ask a lot of questions.
I won't disappoint.
I, I, I was in the same position. In fact, Craig can, hey, what's this check? What's? The only difference was, was I, I would go through, you know, immediately calling Monday morning and I would have my list of things I wanted answered to.
A lot of boards have a policy that agenda doesn't get changed within forty eight hours of a meeting. And that helps. I mean, I'm getting revisions the day before and changing.
We're on that subject. I literally rolled in tonight and asked Selena if she could text me because I'm the one guy that everybody jokes about that checks his email literally once a week. So when I go through it, if there's something that comes in a day or two days ahead, had, had I not gotten some messages about the resolution or the, 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 whatever we just signed, a resolution, I wouldn't even have known it was on there. So that, that's actually probably something that we need to, you know, there, there needs to be a twenty four, forty eight hours where if it's, if it's not granted, it goes two weeks down the road. I'd be fine with that.
I respect that, that you ask questions. I'm just trying to make them moving more efficient. Where if we could shorten the voucher part of the meeting, because it goes twenty to thirty minutes sometimes. And if Matt, oh, Craig had those ahead of time, you know, that's a simple solution right there. And I think he would appreciate it, putting all this stuff in. I mean, just a point.
Well, maybe even if, if you guys have check number six ninety two, email him so he can have it ready to explain. That might not hurt either. I don't know.
My husband has served on the Cibia Prosser financial thing. And they just meet like before a meeting and Tony, if they, if they have any questions, then Tony goes over stuff and everybody relies on the financial committee. They all read the vouchers. Don's on the phone, hey, Tony, what's that blankety blank is this? I mean, so he asks, but then they'll say the financial committee.
Let's see how it goes.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate the consideration. One movement.
All right, moving along to reports. Assistant Superintendent's report.
Social media.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jody. Go ahead, the social media.
The social media night, or the median, I think is what it was.
Okay, so we are, like, they get moved from an action item to a discussion item. Detective Durbin called me today and said that the Yakima Police Department would be funding his time here. So it's not gonna cost the district anything. We are wanting two days. It's one day for English and one day for Spanish. He's gonna address cyberbullying, different kind of apps, unmonitored use of the cell phones. And just kind of the ages of the kind of laws, little bit of, you know, touch base on laws when it can, kids can get themselves in trouble. And he is gonna have a question and answer time. And he's really, he said, he was like, I really hope that there's a lot of questions. We're planning on having it tentatively scheduled here. I've talked to Annika about having it here on the sixteenth and then probably the seventeenth for the Spanish. So that was, I just wanted to see if there was any questions about it. Okay.
I think it's great.
We're gonna try to focus on more fourth grade through eighth grade. So we've talked to, because those are kind of the ages where we can I don't know, what's the word I'm looking for, Mr. Denny? Grab them, you know, like kind of for them to understand really the ramifications. The height, yeah.
How do you plan to get the word out to the parents to?
Well, we are, we're gonna actually, Thrive is gonna help us also then in contact with Haley Green. I had a friend who has created a video, so we're gonna have the video in English and Spanish. And then we're gonna just really share it a lot and really promote it. I think it'll be really good.
If by chance we fill this up more than twice, is he open to?
Yeah, that was the thing is when they, I talked to Captain Sealy, because he was my contact person. And so when Detective Durbin called me this morning, he was like, hey, I talked to Jerry and he said that they'll just fund it. And so when we, when I was talking to Captain Sealy about it, he was like, Detective Durbin's really good at this stuff. Like, he's a special, he's a detective in a special assault unit. And so he does a lot of different presentations. And he's done these for Seela and West Valley, and they will do different topics. So yeah, he has no problem. He said, he was like, I really enjoyed this. He's gonna send me the presentation to kind of see what's ahead of time. You know, if there's anything that we need to kind of tweak or whatnot. But he did say, he was like, I think it's gonna shock a lot of people. So I want to make sure that you all know. He was like, I, you know, we just don't, we just don't know things and we just kind of assume things. And I don't know things as a parent, you know, for example, one of my SOOs came to me and said, you know, do you remember, do you realize like what this app is? And it was a calculator. And I was like, it's calcula. He goes, okay, so as a parent, you're flipping through your phone and you see this app that's a calculator on your kid's phone. You don't click on it. He goes, but what middle school do you know that needs two calculator apps? Because they don't. He goes, so when you click on it, it's a whole different world that gets brought up. And Detective Durbin said that he would talk about apps. He did say, he did mention that they are, like, they're coming out so quickly, it's hard for them to keep up. But he's gonna talk about, you know, the age of you were able to sign up like Snapchat and the major ones that we are seeing. So. I think it'll be really good. I'm really looking forward to it. I've never met Detective Durbin, but I do know Captain Sealy and I trust his judgment, so. No questions?
I, I just have one. It just says for parents and guardians, but would this be something that the kids should be a part of or is it kind of too?
No, this is more, it's gonna be more focused towards parents. I, I wouldn't bring my own kid. How, how's that? It's gonna be, it's more of a parent night. And it's really is to protect your child of ways, you know, especially the unmonitored use of it and the warning signs. So.
Thanks, Jody.
What night's it actually gonna be, Jody?
The date? We would like it to have March sixteenth. That's the date that I reserved at the, for this auditorium at the high school. So it'll be from six to seven with questions at the end. And then because the two days is, I know we haven't set up a date for the Spanish version or the Spanish night. I would imagine it's the seventeenth. It'll go from sixteenth and then he'll come back down to seventeenth. But I haven't confirmed that with him. So it'll be either the fifteenth or the seventeenth, you know.
Is it possible to have it recorded and then put up on the district website?
I can ask him. He did say, um, he said that usually goes over better when it's in person, you know. But he had no problem doing Zoom either. But it'll be in person. But yeah, I can ask him about it.
Do you mind if board members wanted to come?
Oh, absolutely. I would, I would recommend anyone coming, anyone and everyone. Absolutely. We're fucking, we're gonna, you know, I worked with Mr. Denny and Mrs. Cole at the middle school. And then we're talking with Mr. Gilman. And because, you know, kind of that age range. So those are our focus. But absolutely, if high school parents want to come, you know, primary kids, community members, absolutely. I hope we pack this place out. You know, I wanted to.
Oh, two, three times would be great.
Yeah, you know, and he does have a wealth, like, that's one thing that I really appreciate. When I've worked with the Yakima Police Department is that they have a wealth of different trainings.
Great, thank you.
You ready for me?
I am ready for you.
Okay, three quick things. Number one, on Tuesday morning, we had an exit interview regarding the food service administrative review. This is another, it's not really an audit, it's just a review of certain FDA guidelines, you know, meal, fruits and vegetables. It was all kind of remote, which is interesting. So Darlene had Zoom with the lady that was reviewing breakfast and lunch, kind of walking around. So it was kind of interesting. But the review went well. There are a few action items. They called corrective actions that we need to follow up on. Nothing major. And reviewer was very complimentary of Darlene and her staff, so that was good. Number two is the financials for January. As far as a percentage, we're five twelfths through the year, or forty one point six seven percent. Kind, kind of can use that as a guide. As I said earlier, our fund balance has gone down three hundred and thirty six thousand for the month of January and we're down million eight fifty one, eight fifty two for the year. So we try to compare the general fund to last year. You know, last year we, we had additional revenues and so forth. So it's kind of a hard one to compare it to. Better year might be the nineteen twenty year, but we're just moving along. Now you'll notice, good news, the expenditures are the lowest so far, that month of January compared to all the other months. So that's a, that's a good thing. Again, the revenues kind of go up and down. I just want to make one comment. I think I said this last time, but I'll repeat it. As far as the enrollment, which will be the next thing I'll talk about. The apportionment dollars are funded based on our budget for September through December. And then in January, it's an actual, based upon our year to date. So you notice at least at the top there on the, on the third page in, I think, past the graph, we are you know, above, above what the budget was. And so we are actually getting paid year to date on our apportionment dollars. The, speaking of enrollment, pretty good news for enrollment, thirty three new enrolled students. And these are head counts. But twenty seven withdraw, withdrew. So that's a net increase of, of six for the month. Those are head count. And then the next pages are the actual full time equivalent. Students were still up twenty. So that's good news about what the budget was. Nine down in the elementary grades, seven up at middle school and twenty two up at the high school. So that's, that's good news. You'll see our enrollment is the lowest it's been though since fourteen fifteen. You'll see that green at least on the year to date for monthly enrollment. So again, it's been a tough couple of years. I know the state budget will hopefully be passed here. I think there's fifteen days left. There's some talk in the budget about giving the districts some levy, I mean, excuse me, some enrollment stabilization dollars. So that would that would be big. The one proposal, I think from the Senate, don't quote me, but was it Prosser would get about eight hundred thousand. So that would certainly help. But we'll just have to keep watching that. And then when the actual levy or levy, levy on the brain, when the actual budget gets passed, then, then we can talk about that. So just kind of want to be quick. Any questions?
Sheen about the first topic.
Okay. The food source, yeah.
We were still in the middle school. Um, we had a report back from the head of food administration, that we have a high return rate of the information sheet from families regarding their income.
Okay.
At what point do we take that information and apply to get free lunch applied throughout the district? Do we have that documentation? Do we have enough back? Do we have enough of the reports back, and can we do that?
So you're probably referring to um CEP, what does that stand for? Community Eligibility Provision, where everybody um gets free lunch and breakfast like we're having now. We don't know if, we don't know if it's gonna be sustained or not for another year. It's been two years now. Now, there is one law um proposal that if you are a certain percentage of free and reduced, that it's mandatory. And again, that's, that's if it's to be passed, but we applied, I don't know if it was three years ago, to BCP, but then COVID came and, and it never really came to fruition, so we're very close, I think, in, in the whole scheme of things. Um, I'm not sure what the percentages are. There's a formula we have to look at, but we can certainly have Darlene give me an update on that, that I could share with you.
I, I think that would be good information to have budget-wise.
Yeah. Anything else?
I just have two things. Um, I did leave an article um for each of you. This is an article that Linda Kirk shared with me, School Nurses Were Not Okay. And it's a pretty quick and easy read, um, but I do think, you know, I've talked about our nurses and the thing, the challenges they've had. And I just thought I'd share that with you because I, I thought it was important to them or the work that they've been doing this year. Also, uh, in relation to that, um, we, we, I've spoken at a previous, previous meetings about how we're testing now. We're not getting a lot of people coming to testing, and we know that some of that has to do with probably the limited amount of time the nurses are able to do it. Um, but they're going to ship, be shifting that to the schools, so it would be more readily available. Um, because it just makes sense. We have plenty of tests, um, and you know, not everybody can go between seven, eight in the morning and get a test. And things happen during the day where a child might become ill during the day, and they could test, you know, that student if that, if the parent would like that, so. Um, so we're going to continue to offer testing, and we're gonna probably, we're gonna be shifting that to the schools probably next week. Um, just because it's more practical and more accessible. And I think that's all for me.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent's Report.
This, huh? Yeah. Okay, uh, I want to brief the board about uh the webpage. We have a new Twitter webpage, and wanna thank Sean Schultz or Sean Cook, sorry, uh, for her work on that. Uh, there's an app in the Apple Store that's a free download that you can download. It's a Prosser School District app on your phone. And uh, it helps navigate the website, um, and then it how, it will help us put information out. Um, as an aside, I also want to congratulate Sean. Uh, she completed coursework and finished up a degree. And, and I believe computer science management, so excellent work in, in your schoolwork, and then excellent work in your job as well. I'll be bringing, bringing to the board um a cost estimate of the generator and trying to move forward on that. It was about twelve-five, um, so we've been looking, looking into that and getting the generator at Housel Middle School up and going. There'll be ongoing costs with that. Um, it's a diesel generator, and it has like a running cycle, and so we'll continue to have to put money into that. Um, but I think that it's, it's a good piece of, uh, good piece of equipment for our entire community. In the past, uh, the board has uh liked to, like to um kind of assist in some of the decision-making around graduation, date, time, dates, times, whether seniors are leaving, leaving early or not. Um, before we went into the COVID shutdown, there was a kind of a, a hope and expectation that we would get all teachers to participate in that, and so that will be a topic at one of our upcoming meetings. I'm still working with our uh Nikki Jackson um around drafting a contract for the mental health professional, as well as Mustangs for Mustangs with that. Um, like I said, Craig Deanna and I are developing a two-pronged budget for the worst-case scenario and kind of a better-case scenario with the levy. Um, and then the last piece was that um Principal Bailey and I uh are developing a student committee um to start working on student dress code, or at least gain some input um from students around the dress code policy. Uh, so that's all I have to share with the board. Uh, questions, comments?
Oh, thank you. Okay, Board Reports, Andy. Yeah, tonight, gonna change it up a little bit.
All right, uh, speaking of wrestling, uh, we had uh three kids and one alternate go to state, Neil placed second overall. I don't remember. I want to say it's like one sixty-five. Really, that big? Okay, one eighty-two. Uh, Carson Wolf went out, I think, second round, and it escapes him. Who's number three? Abel. I think he went out second round too, correct? So you got a pretty good showing.
I think that Grill also placed pretty well, didn't she?
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's uh, uh, that's right. Yep, Jeremy's kid, that's right. I completely forgot.
Great. And uh, uh, basketball, two basketball, boys and girls basketball teams are playing Friday and Saturday nights, right? Great. Jenny?
Oh, okay. I, I've got a few comments on the new website. Had people tell me they liked the looks of it. I, I find it very easy to use. Dawn and I have watched the girls' basketball team play twice lately, both times Othello. Man, they're, they're a rough team. But uh, we beat them both times. We came to the Miss Prosser Pageant. Uh, it's a wonderful use of our auditorium that is a scholarship program. So students benefit from that, and they're great ambassadors for Prosser. Um, the two times, uh, well, about three times I've been here basketball recently, and the Miss Prosser Pageant. I've had comments from people from other places that, wow, this place is unbelievable. We get lots of out-of-town comments. Uh, this couple from Othello says, man, why couldn't Prosser come build us this? You know, that, uh, a great, great reception from people. Yeah, that's it.
Alisa?
I've hit a lot, um, a lot of the topics I wanted to discuss tonight already. I think the remaining item on my list is when we will, two items. The twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three um school schedule, when will we have that available for people for planning? Um, someone else mentioned graduation date, and then Mr. Ellis's contract is expired, and we need to do his evaluation and let him know what his future holds by April first is that deadline, so that needs to be workshopped soon. We give him some security. And feedback.
Thank you. And Jason?
No, I think I've said a lot of what I was gonna add or uh talk about, but uh you know, one of the things that as we move forward, you know, it's a topic that we're all fully aware of, and it, it is bullying, but um, you know, we have policies in place. It's, you know, it's disheartening to hear some of the stories uh not only from both sides, right? You know, not only the student side, but the, you know, staff side. You know, I guess I'm kind of concerned overall, uh you know, one, if, if we go through and we are fortunate enough to be able to take our masks off, well, we will be able to on the twenty-first. I don't even know how to put this, but you know, the people that still choose to wear a mask? You know, and I think, and I don't know if this could be part of an assembly of some, of some kind, or, you know, I don't know how to structure it, but you know, if the people choose to wear a mask, you know, they should have that freedom and, and be able to do that without repercussions from the kids. And, and I know, uh, or whatever, teachers, however that works, or staff. But I think that's really important. Um, I think as we move forward, um, you know, it's something we really need to consider as a district, you know, make sure that these kids that feel like they need to wear one, or staff, are free to do that. You know, transversely, part of, you know, I think it's a, an overall problem, and I, and I, and I'm not even a hundred percent sure how or why to fix it. You know, we had some mass protests, right? And we were already briefed on that. You know, I did hear, and whether it's rumor or not, it's still kind of disheartening. I mean, kids are kind of mean anyways. Um, but, you know, I did hear that some of the kids that protested were also bullied on the other side. So I think it's, it's part of a larger problem that we need to address sooner rather than later, and it should be addressed tomorrow. I mean, that's, that's how important this is. I, I keep hearing I don't know what the, the exact comments are, but you know, people that are looking at, you know, self, our kids that, you know, men, mental health, right? That's been our big thing. Uh, you know, self-harm, and it, a lot of this, uh, you know, I think is a result of potential bullying, right? Um, at least that's my perspective, perspective of this. So I, I would really like to see the district move forward and really trying to nip this in the bud as fast as we possibly can, because I don't think it's acceptable no matter what side you're on. Uh, you know, the, the lack of dignity that's been shown, you know, through, whether it's staff, students, whatever, parents, you know, it, it's very disheartening, and I think it's hard to get things done when you have so many hot topics, but I, I do really think that as we move forward, that, that that needs to be a priority as, as we get closer to that, taking masks off, so. Thank you, that's it.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment very much.
Could I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
So I think that there, in, like, in my mind, there are a few different ways to address it, and one is to like attach consequences, right? Um, I guess I think consequences and incentives to behavior, right? Um, and try and alter that behavior. Another one would be to um find somebody with the expertise in order to basically do a cultural evaluation of our system, and then give us feedback about how we can change things. A third way would be programmatic shifts, whether um the ESD has one, or whether we want to go out and find different programs that we aren't already using because we're not seeing the effect that we want to. And so those three pieces, we'd have to really decide. Every deci, every decision really um revolves a little bit around resource allocation. So when we talk about change, there's gonna be a price involved, whether that's educating teachers, whether that's paying for counseling time, whether that's paying for curriculum, whatever it may be. And so to really think through, you, you know, I, I guess the first option about consequences and incentives may not be as expensive, right? We, we really start to um, I guess, outline pathways for students about like, you can't you can't cyberbully anymore, we're gonna take action on it. You can't do these things, or there'll be a suspension, or your parent, we're gonna pull your parents in. And then on the other side that, you know, if, I don't know, cop being good used to be a program at the elementary level. Um, I know that Character Strong was doing some different things, but to try and reward positive behavior about putting people up instead of tearing them down. So I, I think that that's a broader discussion about in trying to change the system, what do we want it to look like, and what, you know, what, uh, what are we gonna do to try and change it, or what's the strategy that we're gonna involve, whether um, that, that's a different program, whether that's somebody that can give us advice, or whether that's trying to investigate how other systems may deal with it. Um, and so there, yeah, there are different costs associated with each one, or if we want to, you know, like double-shot it, choose more than one, too. But yeah, I've, I've heard some of the same concerns, and so, um, but I think it's probably time, in fact, uh Peggy had heard them when she was at Patterson, too. Um, you know, asking parents about like, why is your kid transferring to Patterson? Well, there's some bullying going on, or my kid was bullied to prosper, so.
And that's, that's what I had too, was on my list, is that um there's a, a lot of talk about it's personal choice, and we need to make sure that the staff and students um that their choice is respected and um, um, and that they're treated respectfully regardless of what their choice to wear masks or not wear masks. And so um, we just need to be really on, like you said, really on point on that, that that regardless if, if whatever that personal choice is, that, that they're treated respectfully, so, yeah. Um, the other thing is that um the website, I, I also, I really, I like the new website. I think there's a lot of potential. It's still in, in the process of growing, but I think that it's, we're going in the right direction with the new website. Deanna, I want to be on record that it, in the future, whenever we have a meeting on the Woodstrand Project, like we did with the high school project before COVID, I want to be in on those meetings for the, the Yeah, well, but whatever, however, but you meet for the Woodstrand Project, because I, I know I feel really out of that, that connection. And I know with the high school project, I was involved in every piece of that, and the Woodstrand Project is really near and dear to me, it always has been, and so, um.
We really don't, we really have, honestly, don't meet about Woodstrand. We meet about Riverview and Heights every Tuesday.
Right.
Um, so once the construction, you know, once that actually gets moving, I imagine then they would that, that's basically what those meetings will morph into is, is Woodstrand, so. Yeah, you just, I, I will make a note, but don't be afraid to remind me, send a text in case I forget.
Right.
We can also set up like a ten to fifteen minute per week, something with um Ed Champagne and Dan Pierfor or something, just to like a check and connect type of meeting.
That would be great, because um, um, yeah, we made some, some really heart, heartfelt promises to that Woodstrand community on that we were not going to let them down, and I want to make sure that we go through as much of that as we can, so. Uh, and then the last thing is tomorrow night, we have the um Mustang Business Plan Competition here in the auditorium, and that's uh, being hosted by the PETA program, and I'm looking forward to that also. That'll be a lot of fun, so. That's what I have to report on. Future meetings, we have the next regular board meeting is on March ninth. That'll be here in the auditorium. We must have a Wednesday with nothing. No. I don't know. I don't know. So is there anything else that we need to discuss tonight? Hearing none, I will adjourn the meeting.